will be live stream on the Google Boards YouTube channel. Request for public comments will be accepted between eight and eight thirty by sending an email with your name, phone number, and topic to Robin Cushenberry. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second, it's been moved by Ms. Boatwright seconded. By Ms. Middleton early in the morning. And are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Dallas?
Aye.
And Ms. 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 Hay? Ms. Was Dr. Wisneski?
Wisneski, yes.
Okay.
Hey, aye. Sorry, I was having technical difficulties.
Got it. Thank you. So we have nine? Eight and eight and three absent voted aye, and so the motion passes to approve the agenda. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in standing.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence and in our thoughts and prayers this morning. Our fellow board member, Dr. Ross, mother is ill. Thank you very much. Statement of media notification as it has been notified.
Thank you. There are no public comments. The first item on the agenda is Board Determination on the Appeals for the Materials Reconsideration Committee Reports on the following books. The Black Flamingo by Dean Atatta. Burn by Ellen Hoppins. Clockwood Princess by Cassandra Clare. Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close by Jonathan Safran Foer. Last Night at the Telegraph Club by Melinda Lowe. Out of Darkness by Ashley Hope Perez. Rumble by Ellen Hopkins. Smoke by Ellen Hopkins. The Truth About Alice by Jennifer Matthew. And Water for Elephants by Sarah Guren. So. I'm sorry. We don't have any public comments. Discussion on the appeals, I think the board members have gotten the notification. Do you have any comments? Anybody online have any comments?
Has there been a motion?
Hasn't been one yet.
Okay, thank you.
No comments here, sir.
Do I have a motion? On as how this should be handled this morning?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that the Board vote to approve the recommendations of the committee.
And seconded by Ms. Boatwright. Now for discussion. Dr. Wisneski, your hand is up?
Um, I don't think my hands up. Sorry, I'll double check.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. And all those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. Three.
Three nay. Gives it. Five, three, and three absent.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Budget Presentation.
I voted, I voted. I didn't hear you, huh? Oh, I apologize. I was voting in favor of Mrs. Christian Berry and Mr. Mr. Colonel, our Colonel Guy. I vote in favor of it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is the Budget Presentation by Ms. Tanya Crosby.
Good morning, board members. Those who are with us virtually, thank you for the opportunity this morning to begin the very detailed discussions of our twenty-three, twenty-four school year budget. So this is the general fund budget that we'll be discussing today. And we have a lot of details for you. One of the things that I'm going to be doing is referencing the handouts as well. And so there are more details in the handouts than the presentation. And there are some really good narratives about the explanations of the increases and decreases. I'll be going over some of those, but those are available for your reference as well. So we began the budget process this year with really a campaign of feedback. So our, so we began, really, this was something different for us. We typically get feedback in the middle of the process with student advisory and then late in the process after we've already built the presentation after this meeting would actually truly occur. So one of our staff members actually recommended that we begin early at the beginning of the process to get that feedback. And I mentioned it, I have mentioned it a few times to you all that we use the Bang the Table app that Communications has established on our website. And it actually was able to be rolled out via text message to student groups or to parents, to community groups, or and students were able, if they were to see them as well, to give impact feedback on it as well. We got a lot of feedback early on and some of the major categories or priorities from their feedback really emerged. And and I have three categories for you here. Which really signify basically the, some of the major goals, major strategic goals that the district already has. So obviously, student achievement is the core of our work. So that's our primary focus. But teacher quality is one of the second priorities and safety and security is always at the forefront as well. To make sure the climate is is healthy from our student and staff perspective and that we have things in place to make people feel safe and secure in our schools. So really, the financial strategy, I think I've also shown this one before as well, but these are sort of our core principles that are guiding principles. Thank you. As we go through the budget process, we prioritize our expenditures and which we have done. We're maximizing our revenues as well, and you'll see that today. There is a board policy that we will balance the budget. So you will see a balanced budget today. That we maintain a fund balance between fifteen and seventeen percent. We are in that range of seventeen percent. And that we minimize tax increases where possible. So just to begin the big picture summary of this slide is revenues. The next one is expenditures. And then we'll dive deeper into the categories of local revenues and state revenues and so on, and then expenditures as well. So today, what we are displaying is that there is projected to be local revenue for next year based on the current mill rate that we have of a hundred and twenty-five point six operations mills. We project that we would generate a hundred and ninety million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. State revenue is projected to be, and these are based on House projections. We haven't made it to this, we haven't received any Senate finance or Senate projections yet. So those could change a little based on, I think, only based on enrollment. So changes in enrollment from the forty-five day to the hundred and thirty-five day, but those state revenues right now are projected to be a hundred and nineteen million. So again, this state local revenue is about sixty-two percent of the rep, all the revenues. State revenue is about thirty-seven percent. So you got about two thirds, one third of funding. And then a little bit of federal revenue from Impact Aid and E-rate in the general fund. And then some transfers in from special revenue, which some of that is state funding. Or if there are indirect costs coming from trend COVID S R funds and so on. So total projected revenues that we will have without raising any millage is three hundred and thirteen point eight million dollars. In this budget, due to the proposed expenditures of three hundred and twenty point four million, we are requesting an increase of a four point four additional mills, which will generate six point six million dollars and allow us to balance this budget. That is at an estimated value of of the mill for the for the school district of one point five million dollars per mill. So I'll I'm going to go into a little more detail on the millage. So that will allow us to take a deeper dive there and and hopefully help those that aren't as familiar with the millage and how that works and maybe some of our viewers as well. Our handout page three includes some of the details about revenues. It's a very detailed line by line, local tax revenue, state tax revenue. So if you're interested in particular in those, Robin has it displayed for us here. I'm not going to go over anything particular because I see it's very small and and but it is available in board docs, but those show the changes and some of the significant changes that you see from year to year are the new funding formula. They were in this pot of money last year and now they're coming in this pot. And so that's some of the changes that you'll see, but I'll take a little bit deeper dive into local and state revenues here shortly. And so on the proposed expenditures. So we, the current year's budget is two hundred and ninety-eight point one million dollars. That is the approved budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So in this budget, we're proposing twenty-two point three million of increases. Seventy-nine percent of them are employee compensation increases. And so employee compensation would be teacher salaries, they'd be classified professional and administrative salaries as well as benefit increases that are mandated from the state. So seventeen point six million make up that number. School staffing allocations are one point one million. Operational increases of about four million. And we had some charter school decreases of about four hundred thousand. And I'll go into some details shortly about those. So total proposed expenditures based on the House proposal is three hundred and twenty million, twenty, three hundred and twenty point four million dollars. So again, this is a balanced budget and we are proposing with with the four point four mil increase that we're proposing or recommending, it would be a hundred and thirty point zero mills. And so projected revenues and expenditures would balance at three hundred and twenty point four. Our ending fund balance is projected to be fifty-eight point seven million. And it would be a seventeen point four percent. So it's just a hair outside of that range. And sixty-one days of operations. So the government, we, many of our, one of our guiding organizations that we take our standards of practice from is the Government Finance Officers Association. So it's for municipalities, other other governmental entities as well as school districts. And their recommendation is sixty days of oper, no less than sixty days of operation. So we're slightly above that. Which would be a positive thing in terms of our fund balance and and the advantage of of keeping our fund balance. I don't go into details about that today, but there are some definite advantages of keeping that fund balance at a level. One, we don't have to borrow additional funding for just maintaining the operations in the form of a tax anticipation note. And the other is to have for our credit rating, making sure that we have a strong credit rating and keeping a healthy fund balance helps to helps to support a good credit rating, at least staying where we are in terms of the double A one credit rating as we're going out for issuing bonds. And this afternoon, we'll be talking about a referendum. So it's going to be very important if the Board chooses to move forward and in the community support of the referendum, that would be critical to make sure that we're in the best possible financial position in the spring as we would begin to issue bonds for that referendum. So that is one of the main pieces of importance for the fund balance. And so we'll, we'll talk more about that going forward. We, I talk about it almost every time I get, I get, get a chance. All right. So I'm going to take a deep dive into local revenues. And you'll see the sixty-two percent local, thirty-seven percent state revenues. And so that is a, is a byproduct of Beaufort County's wealth. The assessed value of all of the properties in the county is such that the state has their, the fundings of formula that they provide. It encompasses or includes an index of taxpaying ability. Therefore, due to Beaufort's wealth, we receive less state funding, less percentages of state funding than many other school districts, most other school districts in the state. So we have to rely on that local piece in order to be able to balance the budget and sometimes even to help fund some of the mandates that the state is passing through to us, such as teacher salaries and other and other mandates. So if you were to look at another school district, you wouldn't necessarily see that blue category. It's quite as large as ours, but that is, that is due to the assessed values of the of our county. So ninety-nine percent of our local revenues are property taxes. And in order to generate those property taxes, there is a formula dictated by the Assessor's Office and state law, and it includes three components. And there's a good explanation in my notes here and I wanted to include those. Millage is one of the three primary factors in determining property tax levies. The others being fair market value and the assessment ratio. The millage is applied and calculated in terms of mills per dollar. One mill equals a tenth of a cent or one thousandth of a dollar. So so these three components are used in a calculation. And I I've always wanted to put this sample tax bill on the, on, I know this looks complicated, but I just have a few points to put out here. So this is sort of an, this is a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar home and property. It is a primary residence. And so it, and the value, if in the top right corner, you have an appraised value, but it's also a capped value. So from year to year, there's a certain percentage that a home can't increase above a cap. So they cap the amount. So say if I think of where it's fifteen percent or something like that. And so the value, they would cap the value at that, say fifteen percent, for example. And so you'll see the capped value of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. You multiply that by the assessment ratio, which is one of the other gears on the previous slide, the components of the calculation. So two hundred and twenty-one thousand times four percent gives you the taxable value of eighty-eight hundred and seventy dollars. Okay. And then that's eighty-eight hundred and seventy dollars is then applied to the millage amount, which isn't, you see in the, in the thousandth of a percent there. And that's why we're talking about mill means one, one. I think it's one millionth of, of, or one millionth of a cent. So they have moved the decimal point basically over. So you'll see two line items on this tax bill. Are are for school purposes, school operations, which is highlighted in yellow, and school debt. And so you'll see that school operations is one point one two five six. That's the hundred and twenty-five point six mills at the millionth decimal point. So that hundred and twenty-five mills. So we can slide down to the bottom. I've, we've taken the magnifying glass and blown up that category. At school operations, hundred and twenty-five point six mills, eight hundred, eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollar taxable value for school operations is zero dollars. That is because of Act three eighty-eight and we receive zero dollars in school operations tax for a primary residence that is assessed at a four percent ratio. So, but we do still pay school debt. So the school debt has a millage rate of thirty-six point three. And everyone in the county pays school, uh, school debt service taxes. And those debt service taxes go toward the pay payoff of the mortgage payments on our bond issues. So that goes in a separate pot. It directly goes to pay principal and interest payments on our debt. So I just wanted to show sort of the details about what that tax bill looks like and what all of these things mean. And so any increases in this millage today that we're discussing would move one hundred and twenty-five point six mills to a hundred and thirty, as we propose. Would have zero impact on a four percent taxpayer on a tax bill such as this. So I'm gonna pause there in case you have any questions and on that. So I hope that's helpful for you.
Dr. Wisneski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have, do you have a sample tax bill for a six percent taxpayer or a business?
I don't have one today, no, but I do have some. Later on in the presentation, I do have what the impact would be on a taxpayer of a six percent taxpayer at a, at two different, a value of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property and a four hundred thousand dollar property. But I could certainly be.
Yeah, I can reserve my questions for that. Thank you.
Okay.
There are any other questions?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Ah, yes, sir. And just to go even deeper in that, I know different areas pay more heavier taxes due to different, to different, like being in rural areas. So can we get a breakdown of that as well?
Um, this county website has a breakdown of different districts in the county, different taxing districts. So this one is just one area of the county. So there are many, many taxing districts of the county fire districts in particular that would be affected. So that would be something I could probably get you a link to the, to the county's website to be able to help break that down for you. Uh, it would list the schools on there as well, but it won't show the effect of of what our tax impact would be or or.
Right. And that's what I'm looking for. Also, I know, like I said, in some areas of the county that are, that are ruled, that are, are known as rural areas and that there's, there's, there's no development going on. The taxes that they pay are just as high than, than, than some taxpayers in other areas who have those four hundred thousand dollar homes. So, so therefore, that's why I wanted that information as well. To, to, I want to see how, what, when we move the military rate, how does that, how does that affect them as well? What does that look like?
It would be no effect on the other millage rates that are on a tax bill. Only on the line item that we are proposing for school operations. So the other, the impact of any changes in the other, like county operations or fire, or fire district or rural and critical lands. Those are under the responsibility and authority of county council. And they would dictate, they would determine what that millage rate would be for each annual year. And I'm sure that they are discussing that throughout their budget process at this point as well.
Okay, thank God, that's just what you've given me. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Boatwright?
Keep talking to Mike.
Do we only get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the federal government when you factor in like the electronics? I forget all the acronyms. You factor in Title One, all that. That seems low to me.
So, so that's a two-part, so there electronics would be E-rate reimbursements. And there are two categories of E-rate re, or a couple of categories of E-rate reimbursements. One that is, the one that is related to telephone services that we pay utilities for directly out of the general fund. The reimbursed, E-rate reimbursements for telephone services come back into the general fund, and that's what you're seeing here. When we upgrade and do millions of dollars of upgrades on network electronics, those are paid for with eight percent funds and come back into the five, five fifty pot, come back into those capital project funds for, and then we utilize them to help support the next upgrade of network electronics. So that's the one part of the question. Title One IDEA and other federal funds are in our special revenue funds and are not part of this budget. They have their own separate budgets. Title One budgets are prepared at the, we do a district-wide allocation to schools based on a formula required by the state to distribute to Title One schools and get plans for, and then we monitor. Each one is different. Perkins Funds are federal funds that are managed by the Career and Technology Education Office. And so they're all separate restricted funds for specific purposes. So we can't use them for teacher salaries in the general fund sort of thing.
So they're not all captured in that six hundred and fifty power.
Correct.
Okay, that's kind of what I would.
Yes, they're a whole nother pot. And in a future meeting, I'll show you the big picture of all of our budgets. So this is just sort of one column and we have about six more that out there that are special revenue, EIA, debt service, capital projects has its own funds, student activities. And so I believe that's about it. So there are multiple other funding sources. This is just one component of our budget. The others have either restricted fund budgets or, or debt service has a budget based on the bonds that are issued. Capital projects has a budget that the Board approves based on eight percent in capital and so on. So there's a whole lot, this is a piece of, of the puzzle. There's a lot bigger. Overall, we probably have more of a six hundred and fifty million dollar budget district-wide for all of the projects that we have, and this is about half of that. So.
Seeing no other ends up for questions, would you please go on?
Sure. All right. The next slide is just show demonstrating to you, under Act three eighty-eight, state law gives us a limit or a cap to our, the available millage that we can increase from one year to the other. I'm just displaying that this, I displayed every year to make sure that you know, all know what we have available to us by state law. We have no obligation to use all of the funds or any for that matter, but we do want to make sure these are taken into consideration each time we budget and have discussions of potential proposed millage increases. So our current assessed millage is one twenty-five point six, as we saw in the tax bill. What was left over from last year's budget was four point seven mills. So we have, it's also called a look back. We can look back as much as three years. But we only have one year to look back because they, they were exhausted prior to that date due to reassessment issues. And in the past year. So the new millage is available is thirteen point three mills. This is made up of two things, a very high CPI increase of eight percent. And another, a growth factor of two point six percent. So that equates to, you have to apply those percentages, multiply it by the one twenty-five point six to get the numbers we see here.
Okay, CPI means inflation.
Consumer Price Index, yes, sir. So eight percent CPI, Consumer Price Index or inflationary amounts is the highest I have seen in my career. We, I, we are not likely to see that number next year. So that is sort of an unprecedented rate that we don't expect to see in future years. It has already come down. I have a chart in the, a graph in the, in the presentation to show where we are at this point. But, but combined with the look back millage, the, so four point seven from last year, thirteen point three for this year available, gives us a total available millage of eighteen mills. So maximum mills available would be a hundred and forty-three point six. So although these mills are available under state law, we, we're recommending a more conservative approach. So the four point four mills uses almost all of the look back mills that we're proposing. So it would leave a point three mills from the look back and then we would still have all of the mill, new millage available and going forward. And there's a Um, and there's a few reasons why uh, we would want to be conservative here. Uh, one is we are in pretty un- uncertain um, economic times. We have a lot of inflation. It appears to be coming down, um, but costs are still high. Uh, there's talks of recession. Are we in a recession? Are we not? Um, and you know, we have the end of the Esther funds coming up in, in a year, a little over a year. So there's a lot, there's a lot of funds that have been infused into the economy that will no longer be there. Uh, in, in, by the end of September of twenty twenty-four. But also, we want to make sure that we are, uh, there's a, a, another aspect of it. We want to be sure that we're bringing forward a, a fiscally responsible budget. Um, it's providing, and that providing a fiscally res- Responsible budget provides a strong evidence that our organization is able to and capable of autonomously. Managing in our finances. So we want to ensure that um, we are making strong. Uh, legitimate, uh, responsible decisions to keep taxes low when we can. But also to maximize uh, uh, our needs. Um, and be able to fund, fund those needs. This slide is a historical operations millage. So our goal from year to year is to minimize the impact. Uh, but as you see, we, and, and we do want to stable, we, we're going to need increases because of. Um, the funding from the state not being sufficient to cover many of the state mandates. So there is a reliance uh, on local tax revenues. We do want that. Those increases in millage to be gradual and steady. We don't like to see dips and valleys and mountains on the, on the track of, of how we get there. Um, the, the dri- dip you see down to a hundred and four point six mils was our last reassessment year. Uh, the rollback millage took us back uh, almost nine mils. And uh, the next year, we found after um, having a nine point two million dollar revenue, tax revenue shortfall that year. We had to increase all of those mills back the next year, which exhausted all of our three years of look-back millage. So we don't want to be in a position where we have to do that again. So we're working um, regularly with our county uh, counterparts to make sure. We're in agreement with our rollback millage calculations, which are beginning to be calculated now. Um, and I'm having constant discussions with the county staff to um, make sure we're, we have some input in that process. So we do want to avoid those large fluctuations. Um, and as, after reassessment, we want to have the best possible outcomes. Um, and we, and as part of that, we want to make sure that all factors are taken into consideration. With regard to those calculations, in particular, the shifts from six percent to four percent. Those shifts become very drastic during a reassessment year, uh, because the property values are increased, the taxes are higher. And there's more, um, there are more people coming forward to request a four percent primary residence. Uh, and establish their, uh, their home in Beaufort to be, at Beaufort County to be their primary residence. As opposed to their other, their other homes somewhere else. So that um, it, it's, it is much larger, that shift is much larger in a norm, in a um, reassessment year. Uh, and therefore, we want to make sure that factor is taken into consideration so that we don't see this sort of fluctuation again. Um, the value of the Beaufort County School District Operations Mill, this is a history, about eleven years of history. And you'll see um, uh, first um, in the uh. Second to right-hand column, far right-hand column, you'll see the value of the mills. I calculate a mill value based on what we actually receive in our bank account. So I don't take it based on the taxable value times this number, times this number, times this number. I see what our audited financial statements show us and I divide it by the number of mills we charged that year. And so there are no variables in that scenario. So these are audited revenues in the. Uh, so we have the fiscal year and then the audited revenues we received as a result of that tax revenues. And I just simply divide the tax, the revenues divided by the millage to get the mill uh, value of the mill. That component is really important um, in the calculation of the rollback millage. And you can see the changes year over year. Um, typically, I would say a typical or average would be a three percent growth factor. From one year to the next in the value. Um, and some, uh, I think two thousand and fourteen was sort of an end of a recessionary time. Uh, and then recently, we had, we are projecting this year to have about a six point three percent growth factor, which is pretty significant. Which is understandable considering the, the economic climate we are in right now in our county. Um, so we do expect to receive about a six point three percent growth. So we use that projection to build a growth factor. I build a little bit conservative growth factor of two percent for next year. And came up with a one point five million dollar value of uh, of our mill. Uh, based on the revenues we receive. Um, the, when we see the value of the mill. Coming straight out of the tax rolls, it's a much higher number because uh, there may be properties on there that haven't been removed, haven't paid taxes in many years. There may be abatements. There may be certain reductions that haven't been taken into consideration. And it, and if you're taking it straight out of the tax rolls, you're not projecting what future things may occur. Like people shifting from six percent to four percent. So that, that's going to be the conversation that we're going to be having. Um, and so there are two schools of thought is to do the calculation based on coming straight out of tax rolls. But there are fewer variables in the, our method here and the way we take the actual amounts we receive. And divide it by that mill rate. And that is more um, a more of a stable, um, consistent. Um, result when it comes to our projections of tax revenue. As we move forward into the um, discussions with county council, once the board certifies the budget. Um, and we will move on to county council for three readings of our budget due to our um. Uh, requirement under state law to have their approval currently. Um, I, there's one conversation that always comes up. The county all hears about their value of the mill, value of the mill. There's this year about two point two million. Each, each mill is worth about two, two point two million dollars. Why are, why are you bringing forward one point five million dollars? So there's a, uh, there's a um. Uh, different, the difference in the two is due to the exemption for the legal residences. So our value of the mill is worth much less than the county's uh, as a result of that uh, state law. So um, that's something that we'll include in our presentations this year to, to remind um. And that we're not discounting it too, too low or not underestimating the amount. It is an amount that is real and is actually what we've received in our accounts. So, um, before I move on to local revenues, is our state revenues, is there any questions about this section so far?
Ms. Crosby, I just would like to say that slide uh, number twelve was very reassuring. I was going to ask if you included projections that uh, were based on more current estimates of growth or, or uh, decline. And so you, you've done that. Thank you. That's it, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, um, there's a little bit more on, there's one slide on state revenues and then we'll move to expenditures. Um, so we did receive our house projections for, from the State Department of Education. And it does total about ten point five million dollars. Uh, the sales tax reimbursement on the legal resident exemption, that is the pot of money. That uh, when the state enacted three eighty-eight, Act three eighty-eight. Uh, they added one cent of sales tax at the state level. So the sales tax, which is the sixth cent of sales tax in Beaufort County and all over the state, that goes back to the state. They reallocate that and send it back to each district based on a formula. I don't know what the formula is. But uh, that increase to our district this year is two point six million dollars. Uh, it's around, if, it's a significant source of funds. It's a, I think the total amount is actually fifty-two million dollars. So it is, it is a significant portion of the state funding, which is about a hundred and nineteen million. So it's almost half. Uh, the state aid to classrooms is the new funding formula. That in, that amount is uh, increasing to a six point nine million. Or by six point nine million dollars. That's in the neighborhood of forty million dollars. Uh, so that's the second highest uh, largest uh, source of funds in state revenue. And then retiree insurance increased by one point um, one million dollars, totaling about ten and a half million dollars. Um, and uh, so that is, we have utilized this ten and a half million as part of the current revenues. That we need to support the budget. And so ha- we have taken those into consideration. So um, on the expenditures. Uh, our first slide shows just historical information about the expenditures over the course of about eleven years. And so the blue line is the total expenditure amount. And uh, you'll see, the orange line is our Consumer Price Index. So it's our inflationary number. So we, there's a point, there's a method to our madness there. This really demonstrates the effect of inflation on our budget. And so uh, we had, starting in twenty twelve, sort of gradual increases. Um, and it kind of uh, got a little steeper in the twenty sixteen to twenty twenty range. And then in twenty twenty, you'll see it went flat for one year. That was COVID. And that year, uh, unknowing, no one knowing really what to do, including the state legislature. We ended up with a continuing resolution that year. We did not pass a budget for, with any increases. Um, so we went a, a year with no, absolutely no changes. Um, and then um, we were able to increase the budget the following year. So since that year, so twenty twenty-one, you're going to see steeper increases. And that is uh, inflation is having an effect on that. It is having, it is drastically increasing our operating costs. Labor, fuel, materials, contracted services. You're, you've heard that many times over the course of the last few years. But that is just sort of a demonstration of how it's affecting um, how it's affecting our budget.
You have a question? Uh, Doctor Wazneski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I was looking at this slide also and trying to kind of break down the data a little bit. And um, I think another explanation perhaps too, besides just inflation. Is that we had, you know, new schools that came online essentially for operations. Uh, and so I believe that, that that could also be a factor. So I was trying to break it down based on. Um, you know, six-year increments and what our average yearly increase had been year over year. And it looked like that since twenty eighteen, we'd almost doubled operational expenditures. Um, every, or, or since the prior time period. So um, I just wanted to provide that tip in besides just inflation, which obviously is a factor. So thank you.
Okay. Uh, so the next slide just summarizes the categories of the increases and we'll talk about the details of those behind that. Uh, the total increase being two, twenty-two point three million proposed with a seven and a half percent increase. Um, again, seventy-nine percent of the increases in the budget are compensation for employees. Another four point nine percent for school staffing, um, seventeen point nine are operational increases. And the charter school has a reduction uh, which equates to about a negative one point eight percent. So I am going to pull out my handouts and use some of the narratives to help um, describe some of the major increases. And the expenditures. Um, page, pages four through six have um, some really good narratives. Um, if you don't have a chance to do it today, you, or certainly you could follow along through there. Or the um, PowerPoint, whichever. But I, I think they have some really good descriptions that help. Uh, more so than the brief descriptions on the PowerPoint. So um, one of the largest expenses, uh, one of the he- most heavily mandated expenses in our budget. And it's always the, the first topic of conversation is teacher salaries. And so uh, the state proposed a twenty-five hundred dollar teacher salary increase. Um, which has been approved by the House. And then um, I'm not sure where we are in the, I think it's the Senate Finance or if they've finished their work quite yet. I haven't followed in the last uh, week or so. Um, but we're still in deliberations, but I believe there is, is enormous support for the twenty-five hundred dollar teacher. Mandatory salary increase on the teacher, on the state salary schedule. So um, in this budget, we do um. Include, um, we have a strategy to increase uh, and propose a three thousand dollar increase to the teacher salary schedule. But we're going to, we're proposing to pay for it um, in a different way. So two thousand of the increase would be uh, with, with district dollars. And we're proposing to move a thousand of that increase out of the locality supplement. Uh, the teacher salaries locality supplement, or the teacher locality supplement, excuse me. So I'll explain that a little bit more detail uh, uh, further on. But uh, that does have, so the school district already provides um, a twenty-five hundred dollar locality supplement. That's a bonus that comes in two increments, half in December, half in May. In addition to the base teacher salary that you see displayed on the salary schedule. The benefit of moving uh, that locality supplement into the base salary for teachers is one, it's coming into their take-home pay. That they see every payday. And two, it becomes retirement wages for them. So it allows us to get that teacher salary scale up to a level that is very attractive for new teachers, for recruiting retention. It makes Alice's job a lot easier. Because folks are looking at that salary schedule when they're coming out of school and they're determining where they're going to move when they leave college. And they may even stay here for their entire career. So, and I, we've talked to teachers who are doing, who have done that. So um, just, so keep in mind, so that the full cost, had we moved up three thousand dollars with all, all district dollars. Would be about two million dollars more than this five point six million. So that is a strategy we're using to help. Um, help our teachers, but also to move us up to a level that's going to maintain our status as number one. At teacher salaries in the state and to really help us keep and recruit and new teachers. And to keep them in place. So I'll pause there.
Ms. Boatright, you have a question?
All right, I was trying, should I raise my electronic hand? Should I just start talking to Tony? Um, one thing I was wondering about, and this might be an opportunity, but do we have any data yet on how much, how many more? Because one thing I hear, and I'm on Hilton Head, is that we get a lot of interest based on our salary schedule. But then when they see our cost of living, we lose a lot. And I don't know if we have numbers on that, but I'd be curious to know. Uh, because I think it's great to generate interest. I wonder how many of those people were converting to employees. Yeah.
Yes, I, I think that would um.
I'm just putting it out there. I would love to see those numbers. It's, I don't think you would have them ready, but it's something that's, I, when you brought that up, I'm interested.
Right. So we can ask um, Human Resources, Ms. Walton, to gather some information for us. And, and we can provide a response back at the next meeting. So I don't have anything readily available for you today on that data, um, but we can certainly uh, bring that back.
Are there any other questions? Mi- Mister Smith?
Well, actually, I have more. So of a comment, I would just like to um, take. Uh, I'd like to take this time to thank my colleagues and thank everyone uh, the district for us actually um. Doing, do, doing this stipend into, into uh, promote, from promote keeping our teachers. Because uh, just, just we come, some of us, some, me and some of my colleagues were at the State House and the state, the state is actually opposing. To give, to give a stipend, to keep teachers in the, in, in the teaching industry. Uh, and it, it failed tremendously and actually they, they went, they went back to it again on yesterday and we're talking about that. And some of the people, they were outraged and, you know, some of the conversation went a little better on yesterday. Then when it first got read, when it got read on Wednesday. So hopefully they're going to revisit that again. But that just shows the, the differences of an opinion and how, and how important that, that, giving this stipend is to keep teachers. And I just think that um, this is something that if. if anyone or their legislators, that they need to call them as well and let them know that we support this. And you know, this is something that is good for the district to continue to do to keep teachers. So keep it brief for that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Dr. Wyszynski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Tonya, I just, I wanted to make sure that I'm clear on the, the teacher, the man, things that are mandates from the state. Um, the teacher salary increases of twenty-five-hundred, those are essentially at my understanding is, is that they're discretionary. They're not necessarily a mandate. Is that correct? They want everybody to be at the base, the, the minimum. But we already are exceeding that. So my question is basically, is that, is that necessarily a mandate or not?
Um, my understanding from the teacher salary uh increase is that uh, the state scale is increasing, is mandated to increase by twenty-five-hundred, which would take the state minimum salary from forty thousand to forty-two thousand five hundred. Uh, Beaufort County's starting salary uh currently is forty-five thousand five sixty-six. So we are a couple thousand above where they're moving to. Um, so that would, my understanding is that the mandate would not apply to us, but it is our, has been our practice in the past to increase at least the amount that the state proposes. So it is, it is not a mandate.
Right.
Or Beaufort.
I wanted to make sure I understood it because that all came from like uh news articles or whatnot that I had read. Um, I think uh, another thing when we're talking about state revenues and expenditures, I want to make sure that I understand the difference in what um, has been mandated and what the expenditures reflects. It looks like it's about a, uh, we're to the negative of around approximately one point eight million. Is that correct? And I just used the slides to calculate that. There was the state revenue slide that said we were going to be seeing an increase of, I think, ten point five. And I apologize because I'm driving right now and I, um, I can't really see the slides, but um, I think the other, the expenditures, state expenditure increases was in the twelve billion range.
Correct. Um, so based on the info, the revenue information I have with the ten and a half million dollar increase um, proposed by the state, um, I'm showing about twelve point eight million dollars of uh, well, I'm considering um, the teacher salary increase to be a mandate in this number. So twelve point eight million is the expenditure amount that, that they are proposing. Um, so I would say that the I, 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 I not following, I guess, your calculations, and I'd probably have to, I guess, you know, I guess maybe have a conversation with you to understand, but I, I, it is true that the state's not covering what we're proposing here in these form of state increases.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I was just looking at this, the slide that had uh, the state revenue increases and said that we were getting an increase of approximately ten point five and then what the mandates were going to be um, for this next year at twelve. And that included the teacher one, which is fine, because that's discretionary enough to us how we want to use it.
Right.
Um, that, and then I was taking that bottom line number of twelve. So I was trying to determine uh, you know, all in, using the state revenue stream only, how much is the burden on the local taxpayer to meet that need? And I came to around one point eight million, I think, was.
Yes, I would agree with about two million dollars. Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Mr. Chair, may I speak in appropriate?
Go ahead, Mr. Dallas. Go ahead.
I, I like the fact that um, the, the state comes out with these uh guidelines, mandates, uh, what have you. Um, and I'm also especially pleased that we maintain the existing delta between us and other districts. Because if we show, if we sort of, only because we're above what the mandate requires and we drop to that level, one of the most expensive counties to live in in the whole state would no longer have that part, that point of empirical advantage in terms of salary. So I'm glad to see that we're pushing it higher. I think that's essential, and hopefully we can find other ways to push the salaries higher. And I really like the fact that the um, the uh retention bonus was turned into ongoing salary, because that allows a teacher to actually accumulate more in their uh retirement pockets than, than otherwise. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Smith, do you have something else?
So, uh, I just wanted to ask you a question, because that was very important. Did, it may, excuse me if I misinterpreted, but did I interpret that the state, due to where we at, they, these, the, what the salaries that they're pushing, I mean, the increase that they're pushing, that they, that they're mandating, that we, they won't, they're not giving the, they, they, they're not giving us the money to do that, to fund that?
Um, so I'd have to break out the, the three-thousand-dollar increase is going above and beyond what uh the state is mandating.
Right.
Um, and in, if we were to give, technically, the state is mandating only to get to forty-two thousand five hundred. We're above that, so we're not required to go do anything. But uh, it, it, it wouldn't be uh responsible for us to not give a teacher salary increase, and we certainly wouldn't be able to meet our goal. Uh, one, two goals, actually. One, we want to keep our teachers comp, total compensation package over fifty thousand dollars at the fifty thousand dollar mark. And two, um, I've lost my train of thought on that one. Well, there was another point. It was another reason we want to go there.
I think your other point was going to be, uh, we wanted to be leading, leading the state.
Yes, we want, we want to keep our status as number one. Yes, that's absolutely correct.
And the reason why, actually, that is because uh, we had some healthy debate, and I argued that yes, and then they were, some of them were telling, they were like, no, we are giving you all the, we are giving you this, the, the, the funding, I said, because you know, you just can't set up here, pass down the uh, you can't sit down here, knock hand, pass it and make us mandated for us to pay all this money, and you're not, you're not telling, giving us the uh, the funding for it. And that's why I just wanted to make sure that I was, make sure that I was, that I heard you correct, so I can know how to understand it.
Yes, and as we go through the presentation, you must see, these are, these are the main increases, but we have operational, you know, we have to, you know, inflationary costs have risen, our contracts, our other costs, utilities, all of those things, and we have to fund those as well. So uh, these, they may fund a portion, the state may fund a portion of this, but it doesn't help us uh with the total cost of the entire budget. So.
How do we get them to force their hands to give us more money on operations? Or, 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 or that's not, that's not something that we, that, that, that will be, that could be?
Um, well, that's a, that's a great question. If I knew the answer to that, um, I might be a state senator or something.
Senator Tom Davis has been trying to have this happen uh for at least the last ten years. Uh, it, it's very difficult. Uh, Earl Campbell uh knows more than I do about that.
I think the best thing we can do is really to pay attention to the, what, the, like, they made the new funding formula. Making sure we're communicating the impacts of that on our district to our um state delegation, to our um uh, to our folks at the State Department of Education, and to just constantly communicating with our counterparts across the state on how it's affecting them too, because our voices are stronger in numbers. So um, I know that I'm going to a finance roundtable at the SCASA meeting next week, and Dr. Rodriguez is going to another one for superintendents the following week. So we're constantly staying in touch with our counterparts. And it, we are having um updates in those meetings from State Department officials, legislative liaisons. So just staying involved in it and making sure we're understanding the, as best we can, the funding formulas, so that we can help advocate for our school district and, and communicate what impact it's having on us. I think that's the best thing that we can do um for our county. Okay, I'm gonna um, I'm gonna pause on the teacher salary conversation, because I have a lot at the end of the presentation that takes a dive, a deep dive into that. But I want to get through the other increases uh that we've summarized here, and then we can get back to that conversation, um, if, if the board would like to do that. Um, so uh, we've included a teacher's uh step increase uh for all certified staff. Um, that is a cost, and that is also mandated by the state, um, and it's a cost of two point nine million dollars for our district. Uh, there is a three point seven percent health insurance increase this year. We do participate, it is mandatory that we participate with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um, I, I, this number looks relatively small and would actually only uh, uh, take effect in January. It's a January to December uh type increase schedule. Um, however, last year's increase was eighteen percent. So we're experiencing the second half of the eighteen percent increase in retire, in health insurance last year. Plus, we're going to add on another um half, uh, begin to get a three percent increase in the employer portion of health insurance in January. So it is a costly increase um that you're seeing here, one point seven million dollars. Uh, we do get uh increases in that category every year. State retirement uh every year for the last several years on the employer share, this is the uh district's cost to retirement is a one percent increase. Uh, I have not heard of any proposed increase for the employee's side. So I believe the nine percent rate, is that correct? Is, uh, is, do y'all see any increase in employee's side for health insurance or retirement? Nope. Nope, no proposed increases at this time for the employee. Um, also, we are seeing some mandates being discussed for bus driver increases. Um, there are some, there is a a couple of trains of thought in a couple of the House, the Senate. I believe there is um, uh, there is not real clarity on the amount or the percentage and how that is derived currently, but we do have uh, five hundred and twenty-two thousand in the budget available, based on our interpretation of what we believe will come out of that. So as we move through the Senate Finance and get more clarity uh of what that number, we could fine tune this number. Uh, but at this time, that's our best estimate of, of the cost of the bus driver increase.
Dr. Wyszynski has a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a brief comment, really. Um, is this the, the presentation that will be used for county council and for the public?
Um, no, we typically uh, we typically shorten it a bit. This one's thirty-one slides, so I don't normally go that long with county council. Um, but I do use much of the information.
Okay. My, my comment is, um, I believe it was twenty-five-hundred from the state, and this, the title of this indicates that this is the proposed state increases, and I may just be misunderstanding. I want to make sure that when we present it, that people are, are clear on what the state is proposing and what we're proposing. So that, you know, if we do end up, whatever number we do end up going with, it is clear, this is what the state had proposed at twenty-five-hundred, and this is what, what we're actually doing. Are you, are you following? Because I think this says three thousand. I think the state had proposed twenty-five-hundred.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was having a coughing spell, so I didn't hear every word, but what I can describe is how we've calculated this number. So um, as you mentioned, you heard twenty-five-hundred dollars, we've also heard a twenty-five percent rate. Um, the twenty-five percent would be, is what we're basing these estimates on. Um, and it's twenty-five percent raising the state minimum bus driver salary by twenty-five percent.
Oh, no, I'm talking about.
Oh, you're talking about teacher salary, not bus drivers. I was, I'm so sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I was just, uh, because this says, I, I'm just trying to make sure that we're transparent in our presentations. And uh, and it says proposed state increases, and it lists three thousand increase for the teachers, and I thought it was twenty-five hundred um, was the state proposal. So I just want to make sure people are clear when we presented to county council and the public. Like, here's what the state has said we should do, and this is what we are doing. I don't know if it requires an asterisk or something like that, but just a clarification.
I think maybe what we can do is uh split it into two separate lines. One is a two two-thousand-dollar increase, and the other is a thousand-dollar increase, and then a reduction from the locality supplement. So we could almost break it out into three separate lines to describe um, how that impact is going to be. We can, we can do some things to clarify that.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Okay. So we're gonna shift on to other compensation increases. So um, so teachers aren't the only ones that, that are receiving a compensation in increases in this, in this budget. I want to make that clear. It, it does uh have a provision for funding for classified professional administrative employees as well. Uh, so the first thing uh I put, it was that the largest uh cost or increase we had was the remaining portion of our implementation of the compensation salary study for classified professional and administrative employees. So that uh, to round out and complete our implementation of that study is a three-point-six-million-dollar cost to the district. Uh, those, those increases were implemented in January, so there won't be increases to teachers uh or our employees' salaries in the classified, in these categories in July. They will just continue on and will fund the other portion, uh, the remaining portion uh where we funded in the budget, half of, half last year and half this year. So uh, we will continue those. I'm getting lots of cough drops. Thank you all. I have a pocketful over here, too.
Don't take them all at once.
I've got, I got plenty. Thank you. I think it's calmed, I think it's calmed down a little bit. Um, so we're also proposing a two percent cost of living increase. Um, and that'll cost a one point two million dollars for the classified professional uh administrative category. And a step increase as well, which is typically for this group, one point five percent, a one point seven percent, somewhere in that range, uh, value to the employee. So if you combine uh the two and the one and a half or so, that's about a three and a half percent increase uh overall for that group of employees. Uh, also, we are, um, we embarked on a journey a few years ago to start adding um, the steps to our teacher salary schedule. Uh, we're about, this would be about the third time we've been able to increase that. We started at twenty-four. We moved to twenty-five, and we're currently at twenty-six. This would move us to to twenty-seventh step. And uh, just for everyone's knowledge, uh, the retirement age is twenty-eight, the number of years is twenty-eight years. So our goal is to at least get to that point. So we're going to keep going until we get there.
I was just, because I keep raising my hand, but I wouldn't interrupt them. I'm letting them know when it's convenient.
And, and just to um, what that does on the teacher salaries uh schedule is to allow us to say, when there's a step increase uh for teachers, that all teachers will receive a step increase, not just eligible teachers. So we want to be able to do it for all, so.
Does, does that make sense on that? Uh, why that means when there's a step increase, that everybody receives a step increase when we take that action? Because if you were above, if you were at twenty-eight or twenty-nine years of service, right? Um, there wouldn't be a step to go beyond it. So by increasing that one step, uh, uh, creating that extra level, then that gives everybody that step, a movement. Okay?
Ms. Bo, right? Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. Uh, on the paraprofessionals aspect of um classified staff, don't we have a, aren't some of them contracted and some of them employees?
These are just the employees. There are some contracted folks. Uh, we do have services that are contracted uh through in ESS, or yes.
Because you've talked about before, the two groups, like one group, it's all salary, but they don't, you know, it's not, they're not employees, they go through E, and then the other group. So they're not going to get the, this uh increase. Is that correct?
They would not get an increase that uh through this study, and this cost does not include any contractors for increases. Now, each year, we typically build in a cost, a CPI or Consumer Price Index or Inflationary Cost into our contracts that generally caps at three percent for all of our contracts.
But we don't know if that goes to the employees necessarily. My, how many, what percentage of our classified staff is contract versus employee? Do you know that roughly off the top of your head?
Roughly, uh, we have about twenty-five to thirty uh parapros that's with ESS.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
And we have proposed in this budget as well, an increase for them.
To H E, what, what is it? ESS?
ESS, yes.
And actually, um, we have included in all of our contracted services budgets in a three percent CPI in this budget. So.
So I guess my question would be, um, of the thirty percent, like you gave me the number of paraprofessionals, we have is ninety-two. Um, does that include all paraprofessionals or just the class of, the, the ones that work for the? Does that include all paraprofessionals or just the class of, the, the ones that work for the district now? Okay, so about thirty paraprofessionals roughly are employed through ESS. And if we give them a three percent, do we ever know how that trickles down to the actual benefit to the employee? Or is that just sort of a black box?
No, it's, it's not a black box. When we, um, we make the recommendation for the increase for the employee, then they actually, ESS actually has to incorporate those increases and send it back to us so that we know that the employee has them.
Thank you. That's very reassuring.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, but just to, uh, to a, to a point, then the question definitely becomes, you know, um, where was the, where was the employee, what would the employee reap the best benefit from? Would it be district or ESS? Um, because we can say, because as a district, if we're saying that we're giving, we, we, we're giving certified staff a raise, but we can't tell the contractor what to, what to give their, uh, to give their employees. Then that could, that, that could be, um, that could be critical for, for the district as well, just FYI moving forward.
I think, Mr. Smith, um, to, to your question, Ms. Walton, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought what I heard you say is that we tell, uh, the contractor, ESS, we're expecting a three percent increase for them. And then they verify for you, Ms. Walton, that they've actually provided that three percent increase to employees. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
And, and I, and I hear what you're saying, but just having them at the table and I've had, uh, they, they can say, being, being that, being that, we're there, we're being that they are the contractors, that, that they have other costs, uh, along with what, what, with what, what is going on and what we're providing them. So that this time they can't provide that. They do have the, the autonomy to say that. So I, I mean, so I mean, that, 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 that part is still just out there. I mean, be, because they are, they're their own, they are their own entity.
Mrs. Smith, this contract is a little bit different than others. We determine the salary of the ESS employees. Um, that, it's not like a contract where we give them X amount of dollars and they just determine the salary. We determine the salary. When we want an increase, we, we give them an increase as well to pay the employee. So they don't make the decision as to how much our employees are paid. We do.
That's, that's interesting that, which is, which is bringing back to my point, what's used to having them, not having them to be district employees. That's thank, thanks for that information. That's, that's great information. Thank you.
I can, this move on.
Okay, all right. Um, so other compensation increases. Uh, this year, we, uh, were able to, fortunate enough to be able to pass, uh, a couple of, um, payment plans. Um, they included sick leave payout for employees who had lapsed their days or sick leave at retirement. Whereas previously, employees were receiving zero dollars, uh, who were leaving the district. Um, and ten dollars a day for those who retired for, for their sick leave balances. Uh, we're fortunate to be able to have payment plans for that as well. And also, um, that, that is now being, going to be paid out this year for the first time at half of their daily rates. Um, also paid parental leave is a new, um, um, policy or practice of our district. And, uh, that has some effects on, uh, the payment for employees who are having, um, uh, maternity leave or have, or adopting children and that sort of thing. And so there are some costs to those plans. Uh, we are putting in one point nine million dollars. Um, some of those are still uncertain because we're going to be in the first year of them. So we are estimating, uh, we've actually lowered our estimate, estimates to get to this point. Um, and so we do expect, uh, to be able to shore those dollars up as we move through the next year. We'll see the impact of that, um, a little clearer.
Dr. Wisneski, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Tanya, would you be able to calculate the, the overall percentage increase, um, for us? Uh, for the classified, professional and administrative, like an average, if you took an average employee in either one of those categories, would you be able to give us a overall percentage increase? So that we could say, okay, for our classified employees, all with all of these things, COLA, you know, step increases, yada, yada, all in, this is the percentage of the increase to those different categories of employees.
Um, for the classified professional administrative, it would be approximate, well, I, we can, we can verify the number. But at this time, our estimate is three and a half percent, two percent for COLA and one and a half or so, um, average. That's probably a little, a little bit of a low estimate for the step, but each step is valued at different amounts, at different levels. So I, at this time, I would estimate conservatively three point five percent.
And total compensation increases?
Yes. Now that would not, not count any classify or compensation study increases, because those are, um,
Right.
Um, so it would just be the cost of living and the step.
But what about this, uh, proposed salary increases?
Are you talking about for certified?
Yeah.
Employees? Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking for like all different categories of, of staff that we have. So that we can make sure that percentage wise with, because it, what gets confusing for me at least at times is that we've got different categories of staff. And then we've got COLA, we've got staff, we've got salary, we've got stipends. And, and so I'm looking for an understanding of total compensation increases in this proposed budget for each different category of staff that we have.
Okay, yes, we can do that. Uh, we'll provide, we can provide that at our next meeting. Yes.
Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. And so, um, there is provision, uh, budget for a district math coach position as well. Uh, and a, that is needed for math. We want to focus on math instruction in this coming year. We, um, due to some of our scores, that, so that's going to be an emphasis. Uh, and as well, we have academic and athletic stipend increases. And these are increases, they're, these are formula-based allocations based on student enrollment.
So can I just jump in? So we're talking about the math, uh, coordinator position. Uh, we feel that's an important one because, um, we can see the impact that COVID has had across the country and across the state. And certainly, uh, we've seen it, uh, as well in terms of, uh, uh, students, um, uh, achievement within the mathematics, uh, area. And it, it is the area that has been hit the most. In fact, the Secretary of Education said that that impact is decades worth of impact, uh, um, in terms of the, the COVID, uh, effect. So, uh, we see an impact here as well, and it is something that we want to, uh, address. And it's one of the steps in which we're, we're going to be able to address, so. Okay, uh, Miss Crosby.
Uh, athletic and academic stipends, I, I mentioned they are based from formula-based and, uh, our enrollment is increasing, um, uh, average of about one percent, uh, we're estimating for the next year. And so this is an increase due to enrollment. And, um, last year, we did, uh, for the first year, build slippage into our budget. We, it was, um, this year, we're building in again, uh, but at a lower level. Uh, we're not seeing the level of vacancies, um, that we've had in the past. Um, so this number and, and our budget is much tighter this year in the current year. So, uh, we have, uh, chosen three million dollars, uh, for the dollar amount, which is about half of the slippage that was provided in the previous year. Uh, we do have uh, increases in staffing. Uh, the net total cost will be one point one million dollars. We are putting, uh, a few teachers in for growth in case there is growth beyond our, uh, original projections. Um, and we do have, um, in the increases for staffing, we're covering areas, primarily areas in special education, uh, and multilingual learners, um, particularly in those areas. But there is room for growth in other areas as well. Um, so those are a couple of categories of need. And those could be, um, either positions or they could be contracted services, depending on the availability of the staffing to be able to, to manage those. So those will, um, be coming, um, those will be some of our focus in the additional staffing.
Miss Boatright?
Sorry, just for clarification. So, because I was, when I saw this slide, I didn't understand the difference between those two categories. So as I understand what you're saying is that the five hundred and thirty thousand is because we already know that we need that. And the five hundred and seventy thousand is in case we need it.
Yes.
What happens if we don't need it? Will they just get, will we just decrease class sizes? Are we going to hire them no matter what? I, or is it sort of just a pin in there for the budget?
Um, these are, there are five positions in the Teachers for Growth area. So we typically, we put ten in there, but we reduced them to five. Um, so when, when a school comes in and says, you know, I have thirty-five kids in our, these classes and, you know, we can't make this work with the staffing that we currently have, we need another, or kindergarten class is now at thirty-two students or, or whatever. And so typically, um, although we haven't needed to tap into those in the last couple of years, there have been, there has been need for, uh, mid-year hires of teacher positions. So if those were not used, it would fall into a slippage basically category. Um, and ultimately would go to the fund balance, um, if, if unused for any other purpose. So.
And five hundred and seventy thousand is for five teachers?
Yes, that's with benefit, full benefits. And, um, so is that correct? Five? Seven?
That makes more sense because that was like a starting teacher salary and benefits of hundred and something would be a lot.
Okay.
No, I, I thank you for clarifying.
Sorry about that. So as I mentioned, um, we are putting CPI increases of capping at three percent in our contracts. They are already in our contracts, but these are, um, making sure we're adding those costs to the budgets. So, uh, for contracted employees such as substitutes or some of the full-time hires through ESS that, uh, Alice mentioned earlier, uh, with custodial grounds and maintenance, um, we have CPI increases built into those. And then security, uh, although we contract for SROs with the county and the towns, they too pass on cost of living increases to their staff. And so we incur, um, will incur the, the increases as a result of their staff receiving cost of living. So we have checked in with the sheriff's office, uh, and to make sure, to see what their cost were. I just talked to the, their, um, director of finance last week to confirm that we, that they would have, uh, increases, which they will.
Dr. Wisneski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my question was on the, the prior slide. How many of those net increases to certified staff are coming from, um, prior ESER positions that were funded through ESER?
There are none. Um, in our original budget, we intended to place, uh, some of those in this year. Um, and, uh, through a series of budget reductions, uh, we chose to leave them in ESER funds for the, for the next year and reduce them out of this budget to, uh, minimize the total increase.
Okay, so we, we may or may not see those positions on next year's budget. Is that correct?
We will see some of those positions again. Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes. All right.
Mr. Campbell, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to ask about grounds. Um, what are they contract news?
Um, our grounds, I believe we have a bright view. I know does the, um, uh, painting the lines on the athletic field sort of thing. And I think, I believe greenery is, well, Robert stepped away, or I would yield to him. But, um, so, uh, greenery, I think we have two vendor, two major vendors for grounds maintenance.
I'm, I, I have some concerns. They're not doing the job that we're paying them to do at some of the schools.
Okay, we'll make sure to pass that on to Mr. Otting.
Mr. Campbell, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Dallas, you're next.
Thank you, sir. Uh, thank you, Ms. Crosby. Uh, on that top amount, uh, the class, the classified and administrative staff, uh, survey, uh, can you share just briefly what are the mechanics of that survey? Uh, what organizations are they soliciting to get comparative, uh, information from? Uh, and do we, do we have a peer group against which we judge ourselves? Uh, because being one of the more expensive, um, districts or areas to live, it might be appropriate that we are comparing ourselves against similarly situated, uh, areas to live and, uh, teach and work.
Uh, Ms. Walton, I, I, I can answer the who is the group, and that's MGT was the group that did the salary study. But as far as the comparisons and peer groups, I'll have to yield to Ms. Walton.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dallas, I don't have that in front of me, but I know we did Charleston, we did Ori County. We did a county upstate, South Carolina, a couple of, uh, districts in Georgia as well as Savannah. And I think we did one in North Carolina.
Okay, well done. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
So, um, my question would be the same as he has in ter, in terms of the, well, the, in, in, in terms of getting, getting, giving these raises. So we, we would have that same contract that we have with ESS with all of, of all of our companies and, and term, in terms of custodians. And so our, do we control this hour the same way?
Uh, we have the ability to do that. That, the contracts aren't the same. They're all different. Um, but, uh, typically there are a total cost amount. But I know that we've had a lot of conversations about, uh, the base wage rates, what are the raises and that sort of thing. And can certainly be part of the conversations as we move into updating or renewing our contracts going forward. Um, but I, this contracts themselves for, I'm not aware of, of some of the other contracts dictating the exact dollar amount. So I think the ESS is unique to that, in that respect.
And the reason why I'm asking that is because if, if we had that autonomy on that contract, I wouldn't see why, why all of our contracts would not, would not mirror, would not mirror that. Because that is some of the importance of what we do as a district and how we, how we, uh, are looked upon, uh, from the, from the community and our constituents, uh, in, in terms of to give the teeth in it. During COVID, during, during, during the time of COVID, we had, the district gave out bonuses to staff. And the contractor venue apparently didn't give out any bonuses to custodians. And that was a big, uh, that was a big stake around, around, around the county because they feel the custodians felt like they were not valued and they were on the front line and other people were home. And, you know, people were getting compensated for that. And so that, that's, that's why, you know, just to bring the teeth into it. If, if, if we have the ability to do that, then I, I would not see why we would not, we would not do that to with that contract. If, uh, for the time that we, or the duration that we do have that contact. If, if that's what, if that's the route that we continue to take. Because that is a, that is a very serious, uh, issue and how we treat people in terms of, uh, showing them, uh, in terms of funding.
Okay, Ms. Gord?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll apologize upfront. This, this may have been asked to you already, Ms. Crosby. Well, we're talking about maintaining salaries and the step increases for the teachers. And I know Ms. Boatright mentioned something about our paraprofessionals. My question is, are they included in step increases and maintaining their salaries to go up as well? Because it's not just the teachers and administrators, but we also have, you know, an awesome support group. And I want to make sure that they are also getting, uh, an increase in their salaries as well. But I don't see this.
Yes, ma'am. Um, there is a proposed a two percent cost of living increase on slide number nineteen. Um, so for classified administrative and professionals, uh, one point two million dollars. It's the second line item there and the annual step increase for them as well, one point, another one point two. So about So about three million dollars combined or two and a half million combined. Uh, making up about a one uh three and a half percent increase if we find them together for for that group.
Okay, thank you. And one more question about the grounds that that is Mr. Outing's uh area. I was at Ladies Island Middle School at night and almost ran into the pond because it's so dark out there. There's no lighting out there. And that's just unacceptable when you have parents and students who are even teachers who come into night events. Um, it's a safety issue. It is a safety issue. And there's no reason that there's no lighting in that parking lot. I know they put lights on the walk on the walkway and the breezeway, but they do not reflect upon a big parking lot. Uh, and my question is, and I know we have money, you know, set aside to do these things. It's taking too long for some of these projects to be and I want to know if there's a line item to have that done and that needs to be done, you know, immediately.
Ms. Roddy, I'll let you respond to that. But uh prior to it, like those types of issues can be resolved. Uh, you know, in different ways, certainly eight percent funding is something that could be appropriate for 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 that lighting piece as well. Uh, Ms. Rodding, anything?
Um, so a couple of things to add there on the US, is there a line item for like additional lights out in the parking lot or on the road near the pond? And the answer is to that right now, no, that is not a project that is on our list. Um, we did have some lighting placed on the building going out to the parking lot. And we did repair some of the existing lightings, but as far as adding, that is not currently a project. Um, that doesn't mean that's not something we can't look into and we'll look into that here and see what can be done. Um, there's a lot of leased lights out there, so it may be pretty uh go through the power company and see if they can't add some more leased lights uh in those areas. Because I think if you're talking about the back parking lot where the buses drop off, that all is leased lighting. Um, so and part of the problem is, well, it's a big sea of asphalt, so we really don't have like an island to place them in. But let us do some studies and work with the power company and see if we can't uh look into getting some additional lights back. We do not have that as a project. We're doing it this time.
Thank you for your response, Mr. Audi, but I will tell you, this has been going on for years. It's not something that just happened. And as a board member who have constituents who are concerned about this, I think a long study is not acceptable. It should be something quickly. Uh, and board members, if you have a chance, drive by there at night. It is horrible. And I I I cannot accept the fact that it has not been addressed. Um, we take taxpayers' money. And so our constituents need lighting out there so that when they leave events at night with their kids, that they do not end up in the pond. It's a safety issue and it needs to be addressed quickly. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Smith first and then Mr. Dallas. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
In in terms of uh just jumping on what she just said, I would think that that would been done under safety and security. Because when you're, when you're, um, and in 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 terms of us just doing the bottom of for random, I'm not sure there's there's still money left over. We should be able to, because that is, that is, that is under safety and security. That is a security issue in 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 terms of uh the campus. So I think that that could um could have, could be tackled uh through that, through that, through that outlet of money. But um, I'm not, I'm not a professional. That's just, that's just my first to first, first go on that. And yeah, I've had, I've had, have had several people that have thought about that too, but I figured I got young eyes. I'm over, over uh over analyzing. But also, but to just to go back to my point, I asked a question before Mrs. Gordon uh commented in terms of contractors, I I I wanted to, that wasn't just a comment. I wanted a a question or I mean, I wanted an answer in terms of how we, how we make a decision based off what contracts are important to say we want, we want, we want to have an input on on salary and 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 is that something that we can do when in terms of all the contracts? Um, for Mrs. Crosby or Mrs. Walton or without Dr. Rodriguez, but yeah.
So you remember first that 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 ESS contract, uh, I think it's probably one of our newer contracts in terms of of doing that uh with with uh, because it was last year when we brought them in, either the choice of ESS or staying in in with the with the school district, right?
Right.
Um, and so that's one of the, one of the newer ones in terms of contracts that we have with with companies like that. But um, so as we move forward in our negotiating contracts, those are uh possibilities in terms of uh of what we could look at in terms of uh with respect to terms of contracts.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying. Thanks for clarifying that. Thank you.
Mr. Dallas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would just like to uh weigh in on the uh issue of the contractor. Um, the the fact that we pass on the guidance on the salaries is good in the sense that it keeps the delta between, hopefully, the delta between our employees and the contractor's employees from getting too steep or deep or different. Uh, and that that sort of can hopefully mollify some of some of that angst that people feel. However, from a business perspective, I think we are expecting too much humanity out of a business, to be honest with you. Because a business is built to reward its owners. And so the more we pass and say, here's what we want you to increase, the more they're going to figure out ways to pass on to their owners. So that means probably raising the rates that they're going to come back to us. Uh, I've done that, others have done it, and it's with the intent of making sure that the owners of the business are satisfied. Then we take care of customers and then we take care of employees. So I think the delta between having contracting service in-house versus out-house, uh outsourced, outsourced is about six million dollars. And if we're willing to actually pay to have our employees preeminent in terms of how they're treated and draw more talent, we may have to consider that as a viable option, even though it's considerably more expensive on the surface. The other way to get at the core problem, which is a lot of times contractors going sort of clip the service level and try to get away with it. And I'm not saying they do it with ill intentions. They just have targets to meet is that um the way to hold that is just ruthless, unforgiving oversight of their performance and delivery. So if if an item like it limbs is a safety issue and the administrator, the principal has called that in and it's logged in our system, how long to actual closeout? And we begin to track closeout percentages. And then the contractor in our organization know this is a strategically critical element. And um, things tend to improve with that type of organizational support. Thank you.
And we need to get back to the uh the budget briefing, please. Will you continue on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So slide number twenty-two is operational expenditure increases. Um, they include technology, equipment, uh, property and property casualty and athletic insurance increases this year. Uh, we do, um, uh, we just had an ACE board meeting last night. Uh, there is a proposed three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase in ACE. Uh, just to expand on that a bit, the um Buford Jasper ACE Board made a uh several years ago, made a motion and approved a motion to follow Buford County School District's salary schedules. As a result of that, over the course of the years, um, the increases in enrollment uh increases in salaries have um increased at ACE as well, uh, following their schedule, providing locality supplements and so on. And so they're at the point where although we've held the budget flat for seven years, we're unable to continue to do that. So we're facing about a half a million dollar shortfall in revenues for this coming year uh at ACE, which will be passed along to the Buford and Jasper boards on a two-thirds, one-third basis, based on state law. So two-thirds of that half a million dollars is what you see here today, three hundred and twenty-one thousand. So we did have a discussion and I I briefed the ACE board on this matter in February because I knew it was coming. Uh, and then we discussed it again yesterday afternoon. Um, and I indicated to the board that we would be, that we have proposed that increase in Buford's budget. Uh, there was no indication of whether or not Jasper has included in theirs. So that will be, uh, I think on an agenda for our next finance committee meeting. So we'll take a deeper dive into that discussion then. Uh, but just want you all to know that that increase will be needed from an operational standpoint uh for ACE for the upcoming year. Um, utilities also, uh, we're experiencing increases in costs there as well, supplies, materials. Uh, those are primarily at the school level. There are some departmental supplies there as well. Um, other operational increases that we saw across the board. Um, student activities, those are often field trips. Uh, I think our schools are putting some emphasis on field trips, which uh if I I failed to mention, well, I think I was going to mention it later, but um, Dr. Rodriguez, we had our second annual student advisory meeting here in this room um just a few weeks ago and had representatives from every high school here. And one of the thing, one of the, some of the feedback that they they mentioned, every group uh reported out. And they said they wanted more in real world experiences. They wanted more field trips, more things, hands-on activities, that sort of thing. So um, that was something that was important and we saw there and it's reflected in the school's budgets here. Um, so that something that the schools are in tune with as well. Uh, our international teachers program is growing. Um, so we're finding more of our international teachers through this uh through our, I think it's a participate program. Uh, and then professional development, we do have some increases there, which then lends to the teacher quality component uh and priority of this budget. So overall, the operational increases we've summarized here are about two point four million dollars. Um, and just a next slide is the some other decreases that we're experiencing. There was a small amount for advertising. Um, there, I think we were more right sizing the budgets there. Um, we didn't expend all of the advertising uh in some of the categories that we had, so we were able to lower that budget slightly, but still managed to meet the needs um that we currently have and project for next year. And then finally, Riverview, uh, Riverview's charter school, our our only district-sponsored charter school has uh, it, we are funded from the state, so we're sort of a flow-through entity. The state pays us, we pay Riverview. Uh, not only do we pay in operations, but we also pay them about two hundred thousand dollars in um special revenue funds as well. Uh, we pay this one on a monthly basis, the other on a quarterly basis. So it's quite complex calculations. But this one is relatively simple based on state law. You will take the prior year's audited revenues. So right now we're paying them FY twenty-two revenues, a formula uh based on uh divided by the district-wide weighted pupil units. And that number um for this year is or for last year is, uh, it was around thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, thirty-two thousand weighted students. So weighted means that um kindergarten, first grade through twelve regular students are a one point oh weight. Uh, students with disabilities are a two point oh weight and then there are some add-on waitings for uh career and technology students, vocational students, uh, and multilingual students, high poverty students and academically achieving, high achieving students. So uh weighted, this weighted student numbers that are provided uh from the State Department, um, that number actually went up. And so uh the per pupil dollar amount that's allocated to the charter school lowered. And so as a result of that, their reduction was actually more than this. It was actually about a nine hundred thousand dollar reduction. Um, it was a two million dollar increase the prior year. Typically, we have a couple hundred thousand dollar increases per year. Last year was a a strange year and the calculation determined that they were to receive an extra two million dollars. This year, it it uh due to the formula, it has declined by nine hundred thousand dollars in total allocation to them. So it was a significant change. Um, it is adjusted uh for the hundred and thirty-fifth day count. So there will be adjustments. So we built in uh not quite as large of an, we didn't build in a nine hundred thousand dollar reduction in our budget because we anticipate that we will uh that that a reduction will lessen when we go back and adjust for um for the end of year final numbers to them. So uh and we're just anticipating a potential um lessening of that reduction or increase back. So to offset some of that throughout the rest of the year. So it's complicated, but um trying to simplify it as best I can, but uh it is, it is a complicated little formula. Um, but we are, uh, have notified and contacted immediately once um I calculated the formula, been in touch with Dr. uh Mr. Beckhold. Um, and then he has reached out to me requesting information about our teacher salary increases and what we plan to do and propose today. So I have a meeting on my uh calendar for four o'clock this afternoon to give him a call.
Ms. Bo, right? You have a question?
Kind of. Um, this is something you're not going to have to answer to right now, but when we brought up the international teachers and we're increasing, which I think is a great thing. Um, but can we have a follow-up to the conversations we had last year, eighteen months ago in terms of the two organizations that we worked with and if we're still working with those same organizations? Thanks.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Wasniski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Tanya, am I understanding correctly that Riverview Charter School is solely funded through state funding and that there are no local dollars that are utilized for that um district-sponsored school?
I would say they are funded state funding. Um, they are not funded. Well, they are, no, it's a combination of state funding and the local funding. So we take all of the revenues that are in our financial statements. With the exception of the indirect costs coming over from special revenue, because they're already allocated special revenue funds as well. So we take the total revenues in our financial statements, which include local tax millage, property, property taxes, state revenues, federal, um, and those are, which includes impact aid. Uh, and those total revenues are divided by the weighted pupil unit to get their allocation. So they receive millage as well, property tax revenues as well, a proportionate share.
Okay, but so it's, and this might be a totally sidebar conversation because you already mentioned it's it's complicated and education finance is complicated. Um, so on the, but on the charter school side, it's my understanding that their per pupil, federal, state and local is less than what one of our other schools would be. Is that accurate?
Um, I haven't calculated what effect that would be on one of our schools. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm gonna pause for a moment, grab a bottle of water.
Wouldn't that be, if it's, if it's a state-funded school, it's different strategy. But a district-funded school, it would not be.
That that's what I understand as well, that uh Riverview is chartered under the district. Bridges is chartered under the state. And I don't believe that Bridges gets any local ad valorem uh tax support. But Riverview does.
Yeah, I guess I'm I'm trying to figure out, um, I I'm trying to figure out the the differences in the funding because it is, you know, they have their own governing board. And um, like Tony said, the funding is is a little bit different. So I'm trying to wrap my brain around it. And it might be a total side conversation or work, another work session convo so that we can understand um the funding that their students receive. I just want to make sure that we are funding students um the same way. um the same way across the entire system. Um, and it's, it was beginning to sound like they were only getting state, but it it now seems that they are getting, you know, local revenue as well. So.
Right, they are getting local. I'd have to run the calculation um on our schools as well, taking salaries of the teachers. But um there are, then there are indirect costs, really, there's overhead costs that aren't, wouldn't be calculated at the school level that are calculated, you know, at Riverview or are included in their costs. So um I've never thought about drawing that comparison. I know that Riverview receives a little over nine million dollars a year is our allocation from the these funds. Um, and so I'd have to sort of take a look at another school and see if I could draw some kind of comparison between the two.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Is there another question? Okay, let's go on.
All right. Okay, so this is going to be the deeper dive into teacher salaries, the next three slides for us here. Um, this is just a quick comparison. And and also we can reference handout um pages seven and eight from this. Um, that where we draw uh took the entire state minimum salary schedule at the state level. And thank you to staff who compiled this. Um, puts us solidly Buford County at number one. Ranking in terms of starting teacher salary with fifty five, forty five thousand, five sixty six for the current school year. Uh, we're ranked tenth in enrollment and these are based on the forty five day ADM or the average daily membership count. So um, uh, we actually have about twenty two, a little under twenty two thousand students, but the ADM count is a little different. Um, so you'll see Anderson five is right below uh us with a um about four hundred and sixty six dollars and then Greenville. And then some of the other Andersons, and I think the Anderson School districts are in the middle of a consolidation or something like that. So um, that should look a little different next year. And so this chart um that just draws a comparison and and shows clearly that we are number one. And our goal is to stay there. So the next slide is number twenty five, provides a uh kind of a layering on, kind of showing you uh how we're building the teacher's salary. Um, I'm going to start at the bottom and that is the current total compensation for teachers right now is forty eight thousand sixty six dollars. That is the uh for a first year teacher with a bachelor's degree. Forty five thousand, five sixty six is the base, which is in the salary schedule, and they have a twenty five hundred dollar locality supplement currently. So uh we would take that base in the bottom green box and add on or proposed increase, which would total three thousand, but two thousand of that would be um through district dollars um and a legitimate across the board, two thousand dollar increase. And the thousand dollars would be moved from the twenty five hundred locality, therefore lowering it um to fifteen hundred. So the combination of the two thousand and then uh that we would provide and the one thousand moving from locality, which provide a total uh three thousand or increase to the base teacher salary. Keep in mind, um, that would lower, uh, yeah, it would lower the twenty five hundred dollar uh uh locality to a fifteen hundred dollar locality. And so uh that would, uh, so if you add the forty five thousand, five sixty six plus the base of three thousand plus the remaining, the new locality supplement of fifteen hundred, we would put our uh starting teacher salaries solidly at the fifty thousand mark, fifty thousand uh and sixty six dollars. This also aligns the advantage of uh the locality change is it aligns our locality with all other district employees. Classified, professional administrative employees all receive a fifteen hundred dollar um locality currently. And so and but our teachers receive twenty five hundred, this would align and so that everyone would have a fifteen hundred dollar locality. Um, so that is a, an advantage of that. There would be no disparity between one group and another. Um, so this also, um, there is also in handout uh number nine. Page number nine, uh, an average effect on the teacher's salary. So this is what Dr. Wasniski um was, uh, this is a little bit of a response, a partial response for that uh question, but not, uh, don't have percentages on here today. So the average effect on a teacher's salary that is bachelors and their first year. So again, the forty five thousand, five hundred and sixty six base plus the locality that is currently paid, but forty eight, oh, six, six. Would then, we would increase by three thousand and then take a thousand from the locality. So the whole compensation increase would be two thousand dollars. Um, fifty thousand dollars would be the total compensation package. And so that was one of the main goals of this budget to make sure that teacher's salary stayed above that fifty thousand dollar mark. If you were looking at um in uh a bachelor's in seven, it so every, every teacher on the salary scale would see um a two thousand dollar increase, whether it's a bachelor's with zero years, bachelor's of seven years, a master's with ten years, each one would see the two thousand dollars. Everyone would see the reduction of the locality down to the fifteen hundred dollar mark. But it is now making it a permanent uh increase in the state in the base teacher salary. Again, it's increasing take home pay, it's in decreasing, increasing retirement pay. So in addition to these, um, the step increase would also be provided. It's generally an average of two percent for every employee. So those moving from zero years to one year would be experience that step. Of course, someone just brand new coming in won't have a step increase. You have to uh work for the district for a certain number of days, which is the majority of the school year to, in order to be eligible for that step. I think it's a hundred and fifty two days of the hundred and eighty day year is the rule from the State Department uh to be eligible for that step. So that is a breakdown of what those increases would look like for a teacher. And then finally, uh, the slide number twenty six kind of reiterates the same um picture and it just shows a four year sort of history or history for the last few years of what we've experienced. So the teacher's salary just in twenty and twenty 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 one was thirty six thousand, nine twenty eight, and we're at the point where we're proposing forty eight thousand, five sixty six, which is uh about a um thirty seven, almost eleven thousand dollar increase over the course of the last four years in the base teacher salary, which is significant. We got we had some, a lot of attention. Buford had a lot of attention this past year uh when we raised teacher salaries. Uh, we were, we were cited in a report from the Palmetto Teachers Association. I had people talking to me at conferences that they were looking at why, what did Buford do? I had people calling, asking how we did it. Um, and so they were very interested in it and I've, I know we've seen some articles in the news uh recently about how others are trying to do that as well. Will this put us, keep us at number one? It's really uncertain at this time. Uh, we know that Charleston's, you know, talking about doing things. Berkeley is talking about doing some things. Um, so there's a lot of talk about teacher salaries right now.
Yeah, I, you know, I um colleagues, superintendent colleagues as well, you know, inquiring quite a bit. And we're all going through this process at the same time. So, you know, uh, but but, you know, it is one of the things we see as important in attracting talent and uh and also in maintaining talent, so.
Mm hmm. All right, so future considerations. As we've been talking about, we want to stay at number one in the state. We want to continue, as Mr. Smith mentioned, to continue to advocate for state funding. That's on our list. And then also maintaining our double A one credit rating to set us up. Uh, one, to eliminate the tan at some point. And also to put us in a great position going forward for issuing bonds uh and it, and debt in the future. Um, so last main um thing here, uh, impact on, this is a four budget with a four point four mil increase. So I have two scenarios, one with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. This would be at a six percent ratio. So this would be like a second homeowner or a four hundred thousand dollar home. Um, so it'd be a sixty six dollar increase on the secondary home for the taxpayer. And a hundred and six dollars um for, on the four hundred thousand dollar home. In addition to that, there would be increases on vehicles. So I did a, I estimated a forty thousand dollar um vehicle would have an estimated increase of another ten and a half dollars on that as well. So these increases again would not be applicable to the primary homeowner uh on their primary home. Um, so there would be zero impact on that, only on the secondary home or it would be an impact on businesses and um other vehi, motor vehicles that may be owned. Um, so our recommendation at this time is to uh request support of the millage increase of four point four million uh mills to fund the compensation and operational needs of the district totaling an expenditure amount of three hundred and twenty uh point four million dollars. Uh, we do um hope to provide, um, we will be having a series, um, having a finance, uh county finance committee meeting coming up on May fifteenth, Monday, May fifteenth. Um, but do hope to certify the budget here with you all by May sixteen, on May sixteen. And so we'll, between now and then, we're going to be doing some things and seeking additional community input. And continuing to update our estimates with uh updates from the state legislature. So every time they provide a new funding report, we'll be updating that. Uh, I'm told that there will be minor changes from any future projections coming from the Senate. Um, based on a conversation Dr. Rodriguez and I had with Tom Davis, uh Senator Tom Davis last week and the Senate Finance Committee staffer uh indicated that the only modifications that would be made were based on uh the new latest hundred and thirty five day enrollment numbers. So I don't see any major increases to be coming from the state revenues at this point. Um, so pu, public budget forums are going to be first thing on the agenda and those are next Wednesday and Thursday. Um, my folks have already uh contacted the schools to confirm the dates, the times, the locations. We typically are in the cafeterias. We're going to start at Bluffton High School at six P M on Wednesday and Buford High School at six P M on Thursday. So those are opportunities for feedback from staff, community members, parents, um, board members, if you wish to attend. Uh, and then uh we will be using a similar format that we use with our students and asking the questions about what are we doing well and what are some opportunities um for improvement and how we can prioritize those as part of the budget process. Uh, again, May sixteenth, we hope to certify the budget and then we start our county council meetings. Um, we're going to be at Senate Finance Committee. I haven't determined a time on that yet. It should be televised. Um, and uh that will be their first look at our budget. And then again, three readings between May twenty second and the end of June. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so now it's time for the board to give the administration some feedback on the overall uh view of this budget this year. So uh, Mr. Smith, I see your hands up first.
Um, we, we've done a a lot of talking in terms of this budget, in terms of teachers. And we have done some in terms of uh classified staff and that we're leading the way in terms of pay uh in terms, in terms of uh certified staff. I, I would like to follow that up with uh leading the way in terms of paying classified staff as well. I mean, if we're going to do it, then let's just go ahead and all out and do the, as the kids said, do the zag on thing. Um, and I would like for us to really look forward to leading the way in us paying our certified staff members as well, because it's fifty fifty, one can't do without the other. And I'm really beginning to, the more we, the more we talk about this and teachers are getting excited now that the certified, certified, I mean, the classified staff is definitely feeling some type of way. Um, so I'm not sure how we do that. Exactly what those steps are. So I just want, that's just something I want to put out there and looking forward to. Uh, in months and months to come after we get this done to see what, what we begin to work on to actually solidify us being number one in both, in both of those categories. Second, and secondly, there are some positions in this district that I, why, why, I wonder in, in, in terms of the educational wealth slash achievement gap that we could possibly I'm just saying straight up, it's going to be uncomfortable for some people, eighty six, eighty six of these positions. Which mean get, 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 get rid of and put them back in there and put some of these positions in classrooms and get more, and get more time with one on ones with kids. And 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 in terms of um working on, working on, on the uh, on, on the, on the, on the achievement gap outright. You know, so I, I am looking for I, I was looking for a proposal in terms of if we would have to cut today, who, 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 who would be cut? But I guess this is the beginning of the conversation. I guess, you know, I, I guess everyone probably want to wait to hear and in terms of once, once we do the Buford High and the Batty Creek, how the community presents to us. Because I'm there about to say, if you don't have to cut, don't cut. But I just want to make sure that moving forward, that we are going, that we are being very intentional. Where we're spending our dollars at and that we are getting the bottom, we are moving numbers and 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 about the bottom line that we are moving numbers because if we're, if we're not getting these gaps, these gaps close, then our soc, our society is not, is not being, it's not, it's not being where we, where we want to be and industries aren't, aren't coming here. Better jobs are not going to come here. Why industry is going to come here when the workers are not here? So that ta, that takes the role of the school board and that's why we have to be very calculated and very, very intentional upon how we spend our dollars too and about how, how we are, how we're serving our community. And so I, I'm just, I'm just looking for some of that as, as well. And I just leave it, I'll leave it there. Man, I make it long, make it long. Thank you.
Ms. Gordon?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and Ms. Crosby and your team. Thank you very much. I'm looking at um page nineteen. Other compensation increases. We spent three million and five hundred You know, you could, I, I just don't see the need to, to do three point five when we know, as my colleague just stated, our classified employees on need and deserve an increase in their pay. Thank you.
Ms. Gordon, thank you for uh, for the question. We did a classified study. Uh, but what you're seeing there as the three point five million increase is what we have to do as a result of that compensation study, right? We funded half of the increase that came out of that compensation study last year. We had put money aside in the budget because we knew there was going to be an increase and we knew that we would fund half of it last year. Uh, and what you see here is the second half of that funding and that was the way uh it was planned last year was to do the compensation study. Provide half of the increase during the second half of the year last year. And then provide the rest of the increase in this new budget. And so that three point five is not the cost of the compensation study. That three point five is the rest of the increase for uh, for the result of the compensation study. Does that make sense?
It does, but how much did our classified uh employees receive? You're saying, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I don't know the numbers.
Yeah.
The total dollar amount of the increases in that study were six and a half million dollars between, so we began, we implemented the study fully for employees. They received a hundred percent of whatever their they were scheduled to receive in January of last, of, of this, of this year. Yes. And so those raises will continue, tho, those increased amounts will continue into the next school year. And so they won't receive another increase based on that study. They received the full effect of each individual received the full
Each individual received the full effect. So if I was going to receive uh two hundred dollar increase. I received a two hundred dollar increase at January of twenty twenty-three. And I will continue to, that increase will stay in my um, in my salary through the remainder of next year. With an additional two percent on top of that as proposed and a step increase. So that's what I would experience.
Thank you.
So a hundred percent of those dollars went to our staff.
Thank you. Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. Yes.
Uh, Dr. Wizneski is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to keep my comments. I'll try to agree. Oh, I'm getting a bit of feedback. Apologies. Um, so when I was looking at slide number eight, which is the local revenue. Um, and I compared to the state revenue and expenditures. Um, so I was trying to get a idea of how much was gonna come off of local revenue from the state. Um, mandates and, and also the, you know, the raise that we're planning to do. Um. It looked like if we had, if we did not increase anything, you know, we, we kept everything status quo. That just due to um increases in valuations and new properties and, and the growth in the area. That we were going to see an approximate gain of about six point one million dollars. Um, and then, you know, we also had the negative approximate one point eight or one point nine million from the, the state mandate. So that's if we just stayed neutral. We would have about four point three million dollars more coming in. Uh, to us if we did not do any increases using, using, I think it was slide eight. Um. And then I, so my, my concern began to be um, on the six percent taxpayers. And the businesses, because as we know, because of Act three eighty-eight, where this is, this is how we have to operate. This is the policy. This is the funding mechanism, right? So um, I wanted to know what the impact over time had been on. Someone who was a six percent um taxpayer who very likely rents their property out to. Um, our teachers, our firefighters, our police officers, and I wanted to see over time, what could that impact have been? Um, because I am frequently hearing in the community that renters are being priced out of. Um, being able to rent their, the homes, um, that there, there's not a lot of availability. And even purchasing a home is extremely difficult right now. We, we're all aware of this. So I looked at. One of um, the houses of my neighborhood that I know is, has been rented out. I've lived in that neighborhood since uh twenty eleven. And I know that that property has been rented out, you know, basically the entire time that I've lived there. So in the last seven years. This property in my neighborhood in Bluffton has had, and that, so they are essentially a six percent taxpayer. Has had an increase of. Dollars to their, to their taxes, only attributable, attributable to Beaufort County School District. So in seven years, their taxes have gone up nine hundred and fifteen dollars on this taxpayer. And that sets a sixty-one percent increase directly attributable to the school district tax. And now that's also going to include the prior referendum. I do take note of that. But I'm simply pointing this out because as we have these conversations about um increasing pay and. Funding and where things are coming from, a four percent taxpayers, how it's not gonna impact them. It is very much going to and has been impacting our six percent taxpayers. Who rent out their properties to our teachers and to others, and I think we need to really be cognizant of what is going on in the long term. And how that is now playing out, we're seeing it now starting to play out. If you look at the increases over time, we have done some really bold moves in the last four years, as Tanya mentioned, with bringing. Um, you know, eleven thousand, eleven thousand, I think she said, to, to teachers and, and increases. Um, and we also have a, a breakdown. Um, that was given to us in a prior meeting of all of the different compensation stipends, bonuses and leaves and changes that we have made. We've been very aggressive. My concern is that while it is being said that this is conservative. I'm not sure if it necessarily would be viewed as conservative to all taxpayers. Four percent taxpayers likely not going to be, uh, they're, they're gonna put a thumbs up on this. Those that are the renters that are being priced out of their homes that aren't able to, to live here. That's, that's a big concern of mine, and I just want us to keep that in mind. I know it's a big conversation. I know there's a lot of data and. And education funding is a beast, but um, it's all the more important now for us to be having those conversations. Um, openly and also with our other um government counterparts and county council and then the legislature. So I appreciate you guys entertaining my, my diatribe there.
Ms. Mel Wright?
Um, thank you. So I have two things that uh, feedback wise, and I don't think they're things we can address today, but I would like to see addressed. Maybe in the near future. One of my um, things that I would like to see a real move towards is our extracurriculars. Arts, athletics, field trips, uh, after school clubs, that kind of thing. And it's hard for me to assess how this budget is impacting those areas. I think that does fall under the academic achievement. Piece of your three-pronged approach. Um, but coming out of COVID, I've had this conversation with a lot of people. There is a real sort of like these kids have been pinned up in their homes, you know, shut down, and now this year it's been a. A big improvement in kids participating. Uh, I know we've added like men's volleyball and, you know, I've seen it my, as a parent, I'm seeing it in my kids. They're signing up for clubs, they're coming out for sports, you know, we're, so I think that's an area that would um. Apply to academic achievement, that we could really do some great things, and, and I think that there, we, we would just see an explosion of participation. And I think it's one of the areas, as we talk about legislative things coming down the pike, where the twenty-one thousand diverse students that we have in the public school district. Would really, that's a value added. That's something that we can just uh really be, we should be number one in the county in terms of if you have a middle schooler or a teenager. And you want them to be involved in something, you're gonna go to the public schools. Um, so. My question is, I would like to see if the finance committee or, or something would take up understanding how we fund extracurriculars. We have here student activities, which I believe goes more to field trips, and then I guess the athletics budgets and the general budget, and I don't know how we fund these other things. So I would love to, huh? What slide is that? Oh, I'm sorry. Operational expenditure increase number twenty-two. Um, we have a hun- so, and so basically, I looked at the student activities prior to talking to you about this. And we went from eight hundred and something, we have an increase of a hundred and fifty-five to a million for student, which is a big increase percentage wise. But I think that's thinking more like field trips and that sort of thing. So if we could get, I would love to see a little bit more about that and see how. Much of an increase this budget does represent into those areas, and then if we could have a conversation with the full board to see if, you know, that was. Enough, more or less, you know, if there's some interest in perhaps pushing that forward. And then the second thing is, we're gonna have to have a conversation, if not this budget cycle, but I think we can have the preliminary conversation about. The ESSER funding rolling out. What's worked, what, you know, what didn't have a big impact? What can we, what do we need to cover going forward in the, probably not in this year's budget, but in next year's budget? But I do feel a little bit like it's time to start looking at that, the things that we funded with ESSER. Um, and start having those conversations about what we might try to pull, pull into the main budget as those dollars go away. So those are my two feedback pieces.
Mr. Campbell?
Um, I just wanna address something that Mrs. Um, Zinski said, talked about the renters. Um, the, the school district does not set the, the tax rate. For those, those, those houses, um, those resident, the county does. But we never talk about. The, how much money they have made on those rentals. See, we don't talk about that. So, but they, they complain when they got the, the tax go up. Sure, your tax is gonna go up. And, and if we don't wanna educate children, then we need to say so. You know? Um, cause if you look at the constitution, the constitution said they will fund money for education. But we keep complaining about tax going up. I've been paying taxes ever since, in fact, before I couldn't even vote. And still paying, I don't have the children in school. You know, but I'm not gonna complain because if you have an educated community, you have a safe community. You know, so they need, when these folks talk about the tax going up. Uh, they don't ever talk about the profit that they are making, you know? So, but that's, that's just where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, uh, I get a chance to talk about this a bit. Um. If you have a house, a six percent house, and your taxes went up in ten years by nine hundred dollars. That's ninety dollars a year. So if you're gonna pass that along to your renters, that's less than ten dollars a month. So do you think that they've only added ten dollars a month to the rent? Uh, or has the. Price of rental homes is dependent on the market, the supply and demand of rental property. So anytime a landlord comes to me and tells me that kind of things about my taxes are gone up. I'm gonna say, well, let me see what you're charging your renters, and let's see if you have taken more than that. Rightfully so, the supply and demand will cause that. So uh, I, I think we need to have a very realistic uh conversation with those property owners. And oh, by the way, the other piece of the six percent come from businesses. And the businesses in this county are doing quite well. So I, I don't have a whole lot of sympathy uh for them, and I, I think that our parents need to understand. Who's paying for this? Because I don't know that the parents would have a whole lot of sympathy for those folks either. Now, every year when we do this, I summit. This process by saying to the public that we evaluate our superintendent by results. And we are responsible for, for providing him the resources to achieve those results. So I, and the results that he has evaluated on are our performance, our achievement, academic achievement. Employee retention, safety and security, among others. So my question to Dr. Rodriguez is, given the budget that you have presented to us. Are you going to have the necessary resources to accomplish the results? That we are going to evaluate you on at the end of the year?
So I think this budget provides our district with increases uh where it allows us to retain educators. Uh, it, it certainly helps in that perspective. Uh, um, and I think it, it provides. On the academic uh component, I think it provides us uh some targeted support where I believe we need it at the moment. Uh, so I think we're, we're in the right direction to do that, and I think that's what this helps, helps us fund.
The other thing that I want to point out to board members is. We'll be having public comments, we'll be getting a lot of feedback, and there will be things that will, would want to be added. Now you have two choices when something is added. You either cut something else, and you have to say what it is. And eighty percent of our budget is salary and benefits, so you're talking people. So if you say, I wanna add people over here, who are you taking away? Secondly, the other, the option is to add millage. Add the tax rate to the public. So if you don't wanna cut. And the only other option is to increase the millage rate. And that's what we're going to be dealing with when we get public comments. And we have people that say, I need more of this, or I need something else. So that's what, that's what we have some hard business to do in the next uh month or so. And I will tell you that the public comments are powerful. And we have made some adjustments based on those comments. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing them. But then we have a hard discussions afterwards. Any other, anybody else with that? Mr. Smith, you wanted to say something? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and Dr. Rodriguez. Thank you for your affirmation of what this budget does for our community. I have a question on page nineteen. Ms. Crosby, uh, other compensation increases. You have academic athletic stipends. And it increased by fourteen thousand uh, to uh nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars?
Yes.
Okay, and that includes all of our uh coaches? Um, middle and high school?
They are the, we allocate uh athletic and academic stipends based on a formula for every school based on enrollment. Uh, so it's not primary, all, all based on enrollment, but they may be a flat amount plus a, a portion of that. Uh, is added to for enrollment. So since they're formula based and our projected enrollment is increased. About one percent of the population of students, this allocation, the total budget for the, these allocations have increased. So do, they're due, the increases are due to student enrollment increases.
So what is the average stipend for a, a coach at the middle school, for instance?
Um, I don't have that information right in front of me. I can bring the, uh, we do have the salary schedule on the website though, under. Uh, Ms. Walton's area, and they show breakdowns of all the stipends and what coat, but both athletic. And academic, I believe, are all on there. Um, so various sports, it, it would hard to be in, in, it would hard to. Uh, it would be hard to do an average because you may have football coach um versus a wrestling coach at the middle school. Or volleyball coach, they're gonna be significantly different. Some require different time, uh, time constraints. So, but we certainly could get a copy of the schedule for you or a link to that schedule and send it to the board members. And reference the page numbers that refer to those stipends.
I believe Ms. Walton, Walton has uh some information.
Uh, Ms. Gordon, the stipends are broken down by levels, middle school, high school. I think the minimal, and you're, you're thinking, you're thinking about coaches or just athletics? Okay, tho- those, that's a really uh variated. Because you have the football coaches that earn more than a basketball coach, then you have a soccer coach, and you have a, a lacrosse coach. They are all varied by level and by the degree of the sport. So minimum would be about twelve hundred dollars per year for stipend. And that includes a middle school, but I can give you that uh schedule. We have all of those uh. Stipends broken down by level and by duty.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. And, and I don't expect that information um anytime soon. But I, I, I do appreciate your getting it to me and, and the board, uh, because I think we need to know. You know, that information, for me, it's just fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. That could be, it's a twenty dollar increase. I just wanna know. Thank you.
Um, I just want to go back to something that Mrs. Gordon brought up. Uh, earlier, which was a great point because of hacker constituents who was actually, a lady just reminded me about this last week. Um, and I remember one time back, I was asking Mrs. Crosby and Mrs. Walton, uh, Rodriguez, I was asking all three of them. Um, and then, and they were trying to figure out like, what you, what you, what you talking about, what you, what you saying, what you, you know, and, and we went back and we had, we got. We will, at one point, we even shared some, some emails from constituents, but anyways, but to make a, a long story short. And, 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 in terms, in terms of this, this, this money in, in terms of what we did not put out. What I, what the message I was given from the, and, and let me say this before, before I bring up these classified. It is not that we are continuously, uh, I don't want people to perceive it as that we're fighting for just classified. It's just. Out of sight, out of mind. The more you talk about it, the more you digest it, the more, the more you remember, the more when you doing for one, you do, you do for others, they're just like kids. You know, you don't have a favorite kid, you love all your kids. Um, and so that's, that's the point of bringing that up. But anyways, uh, in, in, in terms of that. They were saying that before COVID, we, we did have it to where we were supposed to do one part, when I first got the board, we were supposed to do. When I first got on board, we were supposed to do one part, one year, and then the other part is next year. And I believe this was, this, this was speaking to the second part of it that that, that, uh, that, that, that we didn't do because there were, there were some other things that were, that were taking place.
Sorry, are you referencing, um, the, the item on that slide about, uh, the classified compensation study?
Yes, sir.
So I think what, um, Ms. Crosby and I were, were, uh, responding to Ms. Gordon's question on that item. In January, they got the full impact of, of, um, what the classified study, uh, showed that, that was needed, right?
Right.
Okay. Which meant you needed to fund that for half a year. Meaning from January till June 30th, right? Okay, so, so that, that's, that's how we planned last year. That's how we budgeted last year, right? So that we could fund half of that. Cause that's what we needed to fund. The results weren't finished and the, uh, the classified study implementation would begin in January. And that was the, that was the plan all the way through. So when January hit and they got their, their compensation, they got the full compensation of that increase. It's just they only, we only had to fund it for half a year, right? Because only half a year left on the calendar. So we needed to fund the other hat, the rest of it this year, right? That was the plan all the way through as we talked about. So, so that's, that's what you see there.
We have 12.
Did I clarify that better?
Yes, instead of six months, now we have 12 months.
Now we have 12 months. So that is the cost added to the budget to fund the other six months.
But, but is, so, but, but if you remember, we, we, we discussed basically, now it's almost, it's a little cloudy. When I first, when we first got on the board, remember, we, we, we came up with a, we came up with a, with a, uh, a halfway mark, and then we came up with an ending mark with a goal, a goal, a goal in mind of where we want to, because classified, we had need to add them up, catch them up on steps because at that point in time, they had been a while since they have, they have, they have had our raises. And so with doing that, we made a, we made a, a commitment at a work session, this is, this is this. And we said, look, we're going to take them from this step to this step to catch them up with other kinds and also being that this is where we see them and we, and we let them, that we value them. And so hearing this today gives a little different spin, and let me let you jump and curl.
Yeah, yeah, because I remember exactly what you're talking about.
Right.
And Ms. Walton, I think you, you know it as well. Could you expand upon that?
Mr. Smith, and the commitment we made then, we took that commitment and rolled it into the compensation study. Because we said at that point, we needed to get this right this time to include the classified administrators. So that was the compensation study that we did. So when we did that and implemented that with all of our staff, we took every classified staff member, went back through their entire file, pulled all of their personnel files and went back through their work history, work, um, schedules. And we even asked them to provide us with a resume so that we compared three different categories to make sure when we implemented this study this time, everyone would be made whole. That's what we did. So classified staff is now made whole across the district, across our comparative districts and as a staff in general. So we are not in whole anymore. We were at a point one time when classified staff did not get a step increase. We made the commitment at that work session that we were not going to do that again. So when everyone gets a step increase, certified staff, classified staff gets one as well. So we are now, we have made everyone in the district whole. So that's why everyone saw a different increase in their salary. Because there were diff- different work histories and everyone had a different story. So they're now on that, they're correct levels.
So in other words, this is the final step in making it whole, right? This is, this is the other six months that then funds what that did.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's. Yeah, right. Now, now that's more, that's more clearer. Because I remember, like I said, when, when COVID had hit, we had to put a stop. And we were, some of us were kind of not happy with that because I had people come up to me saying, well, you, I gave us the, the step increase, but can you, I can show you my check stub, I, I ain't see it. So now I, I want to know that now, once we do this, then they can tell me. Cause I, cause I know, I know they go, I ain't got to ask them. They can tell me, oh, well, now I see, because I had teachers telling me after we made that last, the, the last, uh, increase that, that they can see it. I'm hoping that classifieds will tell me they can see.
I'm, I'm doing this to you because they should have told you that in January.
Yeah, you are.
That's when they saw it, in January. They're not going to see another one like that, right? That's what they saw in January. That, because we funded half of that to make them whole in last year. So they saw that in January. If you want to check, what you do is you look at a November paycheck and then you look at a February paycheck.
Okay.
That's the way to do it, right?
Ms. Smith, I just want to tell you that I was in an elementary school on Thursday. And the office manager came up to me and said, I just want to thank you all for what you did for us as classified staff. That was so wonderful. And I said to her, I hope you saw a difference. She said, I saw a big difference and it makes me never want to leave here. So they saw it.
Mr. Chair? I'll, I'll get you in a minute, Mr. Dallas, Mr. Neo come up.
So this, uh, this increase, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you said we're funding this six months of the time. Is this budget for the, the calendar year or the school year? I, I don't mean to muddy the waters here.
No, no, you're not muddying the water. It, it, it gets hard to get at, right? So, so we had a classified study that we had engaged in. The result of the classified study came into us around, I don't know, like September, October, or something like that, right? And so then we began sort of an implementation phase for it. And we had budgeted to implement starting January.
Right, for half the year.
Yeah.
And this 3.5 is for the next school year or for the next six months?
We have to fund 12 months of that.
Right.
Right? But we only had to pay six months of it last year. This year, we got to pay all 12 months, right? So we already funded six months last year, right? So that's already into the budget. That's already in the budget, right? Where we started from, okay? So, so the other six months to make it a full 12 months, right? So, so once this is done, then, then, then it fully funds 12 months. Does, does that make sense?
Right, right. Not really. Uh, so the, the 3.5, does this include all of next school year? So from Ju-, from July to June of next year?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Yeah. That is a question. Thank you.
You got it.
If I may too, um, when we budgeted, when we built the budget last year at this time, it, so we were building the budget in April and May. We didn't have the results and the salary study until September. So we built $3 million, not, no, we've always assumed it's going to be five or $6 million. So we thought we'd do a half partial implementation or a two-year phase in. And so it, as a result, so if we, for example, if we had a $300 million budget, we added another $3 million that year. Now we don't have to go up six, we only have to go up another $3 million for this year. So it fully funds, so we're good to go.
Mr. Dallas?
Yes, um, thank you Colonel Guyer. Um, I, I just have some comments and then I have a possible suggestion for consideration. The first is I think this has been an excellent presentation, very detailed, uh, backup data and more data that we can access and will be shared with us. So I just want to congratulate the ops group and the finance groups and all the groups involved in putting this together. Uh, so, some other points very briefly. Uh, in looking at the rental tax issue as Colonel Guyer alluded to, I think it's worthwhile to look at the, uh, appreciation in rentals and have a data point on that. Uh, and then secondarily, look where they're coming from. A lot of the people coming into our area are coming from areas with exorbitantly high tax rates and they're paying cash for homes. And so I think we have to continue raising our salaries to give our, uh, employees and contractors equitable position. Uh, the last thing in, uh, the comparison between public and non-public institutions, I think there should be an addendum to whatever the numbers say that shows the difference between what a public school is required to do and other forms are not. Because that's cost that is sort of embedded in the, uh, uh, public school, uh, numbers. And then the suggestion is to Dr. Wizneski's point, I think, uh, speaking points, no, not points, speaking facts uh, for the, for the board members might be worthwhile um, in response to some of the questions that we are prone to receive and prepare us ahead of time. If, if, if there's, um, if there's latitude to do that. Thank you all.
Mr. Smith?
Um, just last, uh, Dr. Crosby, someone said Dr. Crosby. You're a doctor, you're the doctor in your business. It showed, you saw, you saw all of us, don't mess with the money, Sarah. You saw all of us brought, brought those call drops. We know where the money lies. I was kidding off. I would definitely wholeheartedly like to thank you for the, your hard work. Because I've definitely been asking you, because the budget is something that I, that's my, to a time come learning and sharp, getting, being more sharpening up with my skills and being, understanding the duties of a board member and, and some of the things that, that we have responsible with. And I have really have been asking you, and you have really been working without, I being, having to be asked, Mrs. Smith, the budget is coming as much as I can give you guys. I will give you, you have, you have worked in to give us the update and give it, give it to us a small, a smaller measure so that we could digest it and understand it. I just want to say publicly, I really appreciate you and your staff for your hard, for your hard work. You know, my momma said, you, you know, uh, it, it's the same, the same, uh, it, it, you give me, give me my praise publicly. You don't have to speak to me privately. And I, and I believe that because you, you have, you have worked. You know, if we, we have issues publicly, we can have them, uh, we can give you blessings publicly as well. I just wanted to do that.
Thank you.
And, uh, just with the last thing real quick, uh, just to, I just wanted to just give some of my colleagues information in terms of these, the coaching stipends and also in terms of these, the arts programs. And I said it yesterday, the operations committee meeting, and in terms of, of the budget studies, uh, we have to be mindful too that some schools are title, title nine, uh, title one schools. And they have also some, they have different fundings from, uh, from different sources with, 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 within the, with, 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 within the description of that, of that, of those fundings. And even some of these coaching positions, they have, I believe they have money to fund some of these positions in, 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 in terms of in their building that will, may, could allow them to create a position or to fund a position more and then, and, and in terms of a arts position. So we, 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 uh, we have to be careful how we tap on the, the, the general fund money to give, to give money to schools. Sometimes when schools, when schools have money that they just, the, the, the minister, the minister has the authority to just do how they see fit to make results in their buildings. So we have to keep that in mind because iron shop and iron, we have to hold them accountable too as well. And you know, that's our job for the superintendent. But when, when we're bringing these, or when people are telling us these things and they're bringing, and they're bringing us to our attention, then we just have to be mindful of that. And I just want to, uh, put that information out there. Thank you.
Ms. Middleton?
Thank you, Ms. Crosby, Doctor of Finance. Thank you. I would like to thank you and your team for your diligence. This is my third year sitting through budget day. And each year I learn something new. You, you have explained the reassessment. You have, you always give us a breakdown of what's going on, what we should expect. And you forecast very well. So thank you for that. Um, as long, hey, just, just keep on doing what you do. Dr. Rodriguez, don't let her go in there.
I'm the best CFO in the state.
Okay, and you know, and, and that goes to show when you have other districts that are coming to you saying, hey, can you help us? You know, I don't like giving all the ingredients to the recipe, but you know, but.
We'll share all our secrets.
But I believe that teachers across, every teacher in the state of South Carolina needs to be, needs to have a person like you managing their money. Managing the money to make sure that they get the raises that they deserve. Thank you so much. Thank you, team over there.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
As other board members said, um, one thing I can say about Ms. Crosby, since she have came on board, we don't have as much friction with county council as we used to have in the past. Because she sit down and she listen to what they have to say. Um, and it's, it have helped, helped the district so much. So give up the good word.
Thank you, sir.
And like they say, Dr. Rodriguez, so let her go here, leave here.
Ms. Gordon?
I, I know we're not supposed to repeat what our colleagues have said, Mr. Chair. But I do want to say thank you and thank you to your team, all, all of you. Money is no joke. Dr. Rodriguez could go to jail, not us. He and Tanya.
And I don't look good in orange.
Because if you don't have a Tanya Crosby, that is exactly what happens. And there's no accountabilities for the monies. There's no one who can accurately tell you where the money is. And I say that because you have done a great job in, uh, being accountable for our taxpayers' monies for reporting out to us. And you are so calm in responding to our questions. And I thank you and I thank you and your team for all that you do and all that you will do in the future. And again, yeah, don't go nowhere, girl. We need you and thank you so much.
There's a huge skill set, not just in knowing your content and knowing your area. And it's complicated. This is complicated, right? Um, but also be able to articulate it in a way that people can understand, right? And, uh, she has a gift for that.
Well, I have to not, I'm not taking all the credit for this. We were really well senior staff, our, our, our team here. We constantly communicate, we're sharing, uh, information, what our needs are in every area, making sure we're getting things funded. Uh, my staff as well, working tirelessly to get this done. So it's a huge effort and it couldn't happen with a lot of communication. And I just try to really make sure to keep the doors of communication open, both with the county. I think that's critical in, in this process because we're so intertwined. So, uh, so I can't keep, keep credit, take credit for all this, but I, I appreciate all your comments. They're very well received. Thank you.
This seems to be a good time to cause for a recess. Uh, I understand lunch is on its way, so let's plan to recess until 12:30. The meeting back together. I see Dr. Berg is, uh, on the line. Welcome, Dr. Berg. I think you're muted, sir.
I am, uh, unmuted now. Thank you very much, Colonel, and congratulations on your grandson's graduation.
Hadn't, hadn't graduated yet, Herb.
Or whatever he was doing.
It's his, it was his soccer.
Oh.
Sure. Yeah. Senior Soccer Day. So the next item on the agenda is a referendum, proposed referendum presentation. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Colonel Guyer, uh, and board members. Uh, this afternoon, talk about the, uh, proposed referendum for November 7th, 2023. I have with me, uh, members of senior staff, I have members of our operations team. Uh, and I also have, uh, members of our ISD team that are here in the event that we have some specifics and the questions that we get. But in addition, uh, Dr. Berg, who has been working with us as well on, uh, on the development of this proposed referendum. And so, uh, exciting, uh, day, I think, because, uh, back in 2019, uh, one of the things that was, or I should say maybe even earlier than. uh, one of the things that was, or I should say maybe even earlier than 2019 and 2018. One of the things that the Board of Education uh, was talking a lot about was referendums. And Dr. Berg pointed out how important it is for school districts to pass bond referendums in order to deal with capital maintenance projects and capital maintenance needs that school districts incur over time. There's only a few ways that they can deal with that. And bond referendums uh, are an important part of doing that. And so most successful school districts are doing that on on a regular basis, on a four year cycle or so. So I want to take a little trip down memory lane as we begin this conversation and then uh, uh, provide some historical background and information on our bond referendum. Talk a little bit about where we are, uh, talk about some of the data points that we utilized uh, in putting together this bond referendum package and then uh, certainly open it up for some conversation and discussion. I'm not asking uh, the board for a vote on this today. Uh, I think this is an important piece that you need to look at and think about and review, but I will be coming back to the board uh, in May uh, for for a uh, discussion and finalizing uh, conversation about uh, moving forward with a proposed referendum, okay? So with that in mind, as we begin, uh, taking a little trip down memory lane. Uh, I'm a former history teacher, and so as a result, uh, often like to start with with history. So uh, when I look at it and I think about our school district, uh, we experienced an 11-year drought of passing referendums, uh, which had some significant impacts on school facilities and and uh, also impacting the quality of education that the system can provide. And so the 11-year drought, a school district couldn't pass a bond referendum, was unsuccessful passing bond referendums with our community. In 2018, uh, Dr. Berg was here serving as an interim superintendent. And uh, the board had an interest in moving forward with a bond referendum because of uh, certainly overcapacity uh, needs that we were experiencing in parts of the county. And so Dr. Berg began the process of uh, putting together a bond referendum. And one of the things that was done was initiating a community project review committee. And that committee looked at uh, what the district was providing in terms of information about uh, facilities. They went out to schools, they visited schools and saw for themselves. They looked at uh, schools as well in other counties, other school districts. Um, then they came back and they worked on on uh, our referendum and had some recommendations. And they they ended up with an over $600 million uh, list of needs, certainly that that exists, right? Or existed at that time. And so they presented that to Dr. Berg in which uh, he said, I'm not sure we can bring a $600 million bond referendum uh, to the board. And so uh, so what they did was the community project review committee prioritized projects uh, at that time as part of their work. And we ended uh, with the $344 million bond referendum that our board uh, in June of 2019, voted to move forward with for that November 2019 election. And uh, and put some language uh, on the ballot for a referendum. And as we continue in in down memory lane, we can see that in November, uh, well, between July and November, the school district began with an information campaign or uh, initiative, if you will, to provide information to voters. And there are specific rules about do's and don'ts when you, when you approve to move forward with a bond referendum. And certainly, uh, I will have uh, bond counsel come before our board and provide everyone, including myself and my team, specifics around uh, what's legal in terms of information and education campaign and campaign or initiative with respect to bond referendums, what you can and can't do. And so we will be doing that uh, should the board decide to move forward with a bond referendum. So our voters in November of 2019 overwhelmingly supported overwhelmingly supported the bond referendum with nearly 70% approval uh, at the ballot box. I had spent uh, nearly every day and every night from July 1, when I got here till uh, November Election Day in our community, engaging them about uh, what this referendum was all about, what the needs were, so that they can make up their own minds about whether support, they should support the referendum or not. But one of the things that I did during those engagements with our community was I told them that I wanted to set up a citizen-led oversight committee that would review the projects that we were working on, the work that the district was doing, and how the district was spending the dollars of the referendum. And so that uh, I would, I would pull from the resources in our community from the tremendous amount of expertise that exists within our community and skill sets and build uh, a citizen-led oversight committee. And then they would operate independently and report out to the community on a quarterly basis. And so as we look at the next slide, one of the things that I want to talk about here is that citizen-led oversight committee for a minute. Um, this this committee, its purpose was to make sure that the community had a way of regularly seeing how the school district was managing the taxpayer dollars on the referendum, to see that we were accountable. There would be a community accountability perspective. We were utilizing expertise. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of talent uh, within that uh, citizen-led oversight committee. They would have oversight on a monthly basis in terms of how we were spending the 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 dollars of the referendum. And it also served the purpose of instilling community confidence in the school district's ability to manage and execute on the referendum. And so uh, the purpose being to deliver a high level of trust with our community about the projects and the referendum. And so following the successful uh, uh, vote at the ballot box with a nearly 70% approval rating, we began delivering on that referendum. And so we first, uh, one of the first things I did was to hire a management firm, a project management firm, CBRE hearing. The second thing I did uh, also was to uh, establish that citizen-led oversight committee that uh, in in January, I believe it was, they began meeting. So November it passed, they began meeting in January. Uh, and and with us, February, we broke, we broke ground uh, May River and River Ridge Academy. Those are the first projects coming out of the gates. One of the things that's really important about that referendum is that our board had the foresight to have architectural work done on uh, on the classroom expansions at May River and at River Ridge. And those were capacity issues and high priority. And uh, in essence, it allowed us to begin work on that referendum in February. So between passing of the referendum, it was a short amount of time before we got off the ground running on projects for the referendum. And so in April of 2020, we received the initial bond payments from the referendum. And then, of course, uh, as you all know, in March of 2020, uh, there was uh, the COVID and the COVID impact. But one of the things we're most proud of is continuing to deliver on the promise of of the referendum to our community. And in spite of COVID, there were uh, different things that contractors had to do in order to keep their workflow going. Uh, and and so we were able to successfully do that, manage that as well uh, through COVID in delivering on the referendum. We're expected that by 2024, completion of that 2019 bond referendum. There's some projects that'll be going on and completion of those projects should take place uh, in 2024. So on the next slide, I want to begin talking about this 2023 potential bond referendum. In December, I put together Community Project Review Committee 2.0 that established and contributed more than 900 hours worth of volunteer work in reviewing needs of the school system, visiting schools, and then coming together and prioritizing uh, uh, a referendum uh, needs, list of needs uh, for me to review and to look at. In March, if you remember, we had our financial advisor, Sir Brian Nurek, here. And he spoke to us about having a conservative uh, estimate for the referendum with 400 million plus future bond referendum uh, that would not raise millage, would not be necessary to raise the millage. But we would be able to to complete uh, 400 million plus bond referendum. 2023 in April, uh, just this this month earlier, the Community Project Review Committee met with me and with our operations staff and shared their findings and their recommendations prioritized uh, list of projects for us to consider for the referendum. So one of the key components in reviewing this is trying to find the sweet spot. What is it that we can do in terms of impacting positively our capital maintenance projects and capital maintenance needs? And and looking at uh, various sets of data and information. And so operations team had a facility condition assessment uh, that was done. We have school district needs that we're aware of and that we know of. And then there's a Community Project Review Committee 2.0, list of recommendations and recommended items. And then we have input from our financial advisor, giving us guidance around where we could land um, without raising millage. So looking at all of those components and beginning to look at those needs, we began to land the plane on a potential package for bond referendum. And so I want to talk a little bit about each of those components now and some of the things that stood out in the facility condition assessment were HVAC needs, uh, parking area improvements, roofing needs within the school system. Some of the identified district needs that we had were around a Hilton Head Island High School, Ladies Island Middle School, new elementary school in Bluffton, career and technical education expansions at some of our high schools. Uh, at um, uh, we'll talk more about that in a minute. We looked at 2019 Community Project Review Committee carryover projects. When I say carryover projects, I'm talking about projects that didn't make the list in 2019 as an example. Right? So so our Community Project Review Committee was also able to look at that. And they remembered there were many uh, uh, many members that served on that first one that also served on the second one. Um, there are early childhood expansion, uh, education needs, technology warehouse and imaging center, HVAC replacement pops up again, additional safety, security projects, Riverview Gym. You see the highlighted uh, 2019 Community Project Review Committee carryover projects. Every project really above that list, including the River Ridge Gym that's down at the bottom of the list, are some of those carryover projects that existed from from 2019 as well. Something else I'd mentioned to you is that there was a career and technical education expansion and a Hilton Head Island High School that the board approved in that last referendum. Uh, and the voters approved where architectural work was done. So uh, we've talked about that here, about a a new high school for Hilton Head High School and architectural work there. Uh, and then there was also a May River uh, High School, uh, career and technical education uh, building as well that existed. The Community Project Review Committee 2.0 also identified replacement school on Hilton Head Island High School, replacement school at Ladies Island Middle. They identified land for future schools. I'm going to keep going on this list, but I'm going to come back to land for future schools before I move off of this slide. They identified career and technical education expansion at Bluffton High School and Beaufort High School as well. Uh, additional safety and security improvements, uh, new elementary school in Bluffton uh, deal with overcapacity. They talked about HVAC replacements that they identified as well. Uh, certainly you have uh, a Riverview Gym here, technology warehouse, imaging center. So you see some of these same topics coming up, but then you see the committee recommended expanding early childhood, even though it wasn't in their list that approached a 400 million uh, referendum. They did uh, have it on the list and indicated that it was, it was possible to fit in there. They were comfortable with nearly, nearly all of them were comfortable with a number that would not increase the millage. Okay, so they said it's a priority for us as a committee that we also consider the early childhood component. Then, as you remember, we had our financial advisor. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. So let let me talk about the land for future schools. It's on their recommendation. Uh, in a minute, you're going to see my recommendation to you as the board for a project review. And it it is not in my recommendation. And I I want to share with you why it's not. One, we know we need additional land, okay? But but land is hard to find. If you put it in a bond referendum, then you're required to spend the money on that. And it's difficult to find the land. We have other ways that we can look at uh, to fund the land purchase. We've done it uh, uh, before, right? So so that's why it did not make my recommendation, because if you put land for future school in there, then that's where you have to spend it. Right? Okay. The financial advisor conservatively estimate estimate was a $400 million plus uh, dollar bond referendum. You remember when Mr. Nurek was here and he shared that with us. Uh, significant and important was we want to make sure that we maintain our credit rating. Uh, and you heard how important that is today also from Ms. Crosby. Uh, and of course, uh, maintaining our fund balance, which Ms. Crosby also spoke about today. Uh, those are really important in terms of bond referendums. Okay? So if we get to the next slide, you begin to see the superintendent's recommendation. And so uh, one of the things I want to caution everybody about. When we began putting this package together, we have a preliminary estimate on these costs for these projects. And it comes to, you see 419 million. That allows us to not raise the millage. Okay? I want you to know that CBRE hearing is doing, that that they did the initial cost analysis. They're reviewing their cost analysis and will meet with me next week uh, and and begin to provide me with an update as they fine tune their cost analysis. I have also uh, we went out for bid for a second cost analysis from another third party and uh, utilize uh, Cummings to help uh, build a second cost analysis on this, because it's really important that we can fine tune what those costs are. And where it becomes very challenging is predicting on what happens four years from now when you're finalizing referendum work. So so by utilizing two uh, cost analysis from independent uh, parties, that helps us uh, begin to land the plane on that cost. So I don't want you to get married to the 419 number. And I don't want you to get married to the numbers on the next page. Uh, and and I can't stress that enough because I think that's important. And and I can't stress that enough because I think that's important as we as we move move through this this process. So you can see in the superintendent's recommendation that you have Hilton Head Island High School. You have a Ladies Island Middle School. There's a new elementary school in Bluffton, Riverview Gym, a career and technical education expansion that includes May River High School, Bluffton High School and Beaufort High School. You also see Technology Warehouse Imaging Center. You have HVAC replacements, furniture, parking lot drives and sidewalks, additional safety and security enhancements, early childhood expansion and Wright Choices Kitchen. We have students here at Wright Choices, and there isn't a kitchen there, so we we end up having to bring food over here from other other locations for them. You go to the next slide, you see those preliminary numbers that help us land the plane at four nineteenth on those same projects. If you go to the next slide, what you see here is where we are today. An opportunity for board review and feedback on this package. You see that a second cost assessment is coming that I'm going to take and my team is going to take and we're going to work on it and and fine tune from that cost, the second cost assessment. We're going to have a bond attorney provide ballot language that we will need. And then I will come back to the Board of Education in May for a vote and determine authorization for us to move forward with the two thousand and twenty three bond referendum on November seventh. If you go to the next slide, so you're aware that after board authorization, we will begin the initiative on the Information and Education Campaign. You will see me everywhere through community engagements. I will go anywhere to speak with any group with respect to our our bond referendum and providing information and education about what it entails once the board has authorized the final project. And then, of course, Election Day on November seventh, two thousand and twenty three. And so I'll stop there. And if we have any questions.
Well, let's see if Dr. Burke has anything that he would like to.
Are you there?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for inviting me and asking me. I think Dr. Rodriguez has done a wonderful job laying this out. And back in two thousand and nineteen, when I was there, that that eleven year drought without a referendum was such a big thing to everybody. But once the system gets into a regular cycle of every four years, you can work at the projects that need to get done. And even though there's four hundred million or so here, there's another whole batch of issues that need to come back in two thousand and twenty seven. So in in three cycles, I think Beaufort County can be very close to having some of the best schools in the whole state of South Carolina. I'm proud of what you're considering. The the public is supportive. There isn't any reason to to think that this this issue wouldn't deliver on a plus seventy percent. Yes. Congratulations. Thank you.
So board members, comments, questions? Ms. Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Berg. I appreciate all that you all have done with it. I still have a question, and I guess this with the bond referendum, no problems with that, except we still have projects that are not completed. And we have communities where people who vote for us, who will be voting for this referendum. And what I'm hearing still is about the safety issue of Ladies Island Middle not having the lights that they need for safety issues leaving there with their children and and parents. And that's a that's a project that should be at the forefront because it is a safety issue. And I understand Mr. Outing saying that, well, you know, I guess it's non Dominion who may have a dog in a bite, but he really doesn't because they didn't take our money to make sure that our kids are safe. I need to know and our community needs to know that that would be addressed. Those things that we have that we've promised people, Ladies Island Middle is on here again for bond referendum. If if we don't give and complete these projects that we promised, why should that other thirty percent vote?
So I just want to clarify, Mr. Harding, what's their lighting in that referendum twenty nineteen for Ladies Island Middle?
Would you check?
We'll follow up, but regardless of whether it was in that twenty nineteen bond referendum or not, we're dealing with with a safety issue that you've brought up today, and so we will look at working on that way or another.
I appreciate that. What I'm saying is it has been long overdue. They deserve to have lights back there so that no one drives into that pond, that when parents leave activities at night, they can see how to get out of there. And to me, this is absolutely unacceptable that this has gone on for so long. But yet we expect the community to back us up with a new referendum, and I don't think it takes a referendum to walk out in the back of a school and see that you have no lights back there and it is so dark. It is not safe. We still owe our children and our communities to fix that problem. Thank you.
I don't I don't I don't disagree with you, and and we can work on on correcting that lighting issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Let me start by saying I thank them for their nine hundred hours of community service, volunteer hours, and they should have gone to guys who had a hand in this. It's very, it's been appreciative. But excuse me, and in terms of where we are and what we are presented, there are there are there are still some things that I think that from visiting buildings, like as in, for instance, Beaver High School, when you first walk in the building, when you have games or you have events there, the bathroom has a god awful odor. We can't continually say that, oh, well, it's because of the piping. It has to be done about that. I mean, because it almost seems it comes across that you that that we turn a dead air to those things. And and then that cannot be the continuance be be behavior of the district. You know, because I mean, like people, I mean, as a board member, it is very, it is very uncomfortable walking in there. And and that bathroom smelled like that, and you're in there, people know you're like, do you smell this? Or do or they stop you? They they cut you off. Do you smell this? And I've been saying this for years now. About this nasty smell in in this bathroom that's right there, walking into the gym. Sometimes the smell is so bad when they 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 hit people, you open the door when going into the game, and that's where they post up at to to sell tickets right, right, right in front of that new best view that that was just put up by the district.
In the gymnasium?
Well, actually, it's right on the gymnasium. It's right on the side of it. It's right there. So I mean, just that's just to put the teeth in what I'm saying. And also, you know, when I look up the term, the terms of the Riverview Gymnasium, I didn't know that gymnasium was was something that could go into bar referendum because I remember when we were talking about St. John's Elementary School Gymnasium just months ago, just weeks ago, you know, in terms of the referendum, I was told that that's not nothing that we would want to put into a referendum. A gym is not worth putting into a referendum. And then I look on to this referendum and I see the Riverview Gym. That definitely gives me gave me red red flags, and that's not really an active school that we use. It's our campus. But then again, we also have a venue like Head Start who uses our business, who who we charge for different things that they do that they've done, and then we split costs with them in terms of their HVACs or their different things that we split costs with them. But now we're talking about doing a whole gym for Riverview that that New County students does not use indirectly.
Well, I I don't think you can say Beaufort County school students don't use it because, you know, Riverview students are Beaufort County students. It's a district.
Well, that's true, but to me as a as a board member, I don't see where we, or even I term are to some degree, and and if we are, then I would like to kind of be more educated on that that we hold to a standard when it comes to that school and those kids in particularly. So I view that as a little different as versus being one of our original, you know, one of our babies, you know, that that something happened, we're first to notice versus there. So that's just that's just some of some of the different things. And then, you know, so I mean, this is grown. I'm not beating it down at the first look. But I think there are definitely different things that need to have a deeper dive into along with some of your some of these issues that are on this list. And I'll just do that there.
That that appreciate that, Mr. Smith, and that's that's why we do this today and why I don't ask you for a vote on this today because you you have to have a chance to roll this over, think about it and provide feedback like you're doing.
Right. And then additional safety and security. What does that look like? And what does that consist of? Because that's almost a broader, you know, referendum, we, I guess, you know, the the funding and you and I both, as you just stated upon land, where what exactly would that take, would that would that take care of? Just goes back to to the point we made earlier, when we talked about the laser middle school, safety and security issue in terms of the funding and if they were still funding about the middle school, but for this, where where exactly is it technology? I mean, what exactly does that consist of?
Sure. So there are, there are, and I'll let Mr. Harding talk a little bit more about this, but there are components of that vape detecting devices and things like that that are safety related within restrooms at all of our schools. What else, Mr. Harding? Item is door contacts for exterior doors to let us know when they're held open. So those are the two main items in the safety and security category.
Well, I'll just say the vape items. Those kids find a wrong way or way wrong that I'm sure taxpayers unfortunately would not, or they would definitely have something to say about that. And and not not saying that I'm promoting kids doing vapors, but I'm just saying that even even at one of the school board conferences, we're talking about a large amount of people who have spent money to get these vaping whistles and different things. But a human, our human being is especially the way these kids, they like these fruity these fruity vapes, you're naturally a machine yourself when you walk by or when you when you hear that, you can smell that scrubber coming out of the bathroom. But the question is, when one is in the bathroom, what can you really do about it if you don't really have that kid? Or, you know, they're not sure. So I think that.
I understand, but you know, one of the things I sit here at board meetings and I hear some public comments that we get on a regular basis, that's one of the items that they've addressed in some of the commentaries that they make as well. So this is all for feedback. I'm right. I'm writing down what you say. So it's an opportunity for us to go back and and reformat if, you know, vape detecting devices is not of interest to the board on there, I have the opportunity to to make adjustments before a package comes back to you.
Ms. Bo Wright and then Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Chair, when after my turn, whenever.
And I'll get I'll get to you then, too, Carlson.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Bo Wright.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. So going over it, one thing that I've said before that I think is important is we need to look at enrollment and capacity. So we talk about the new elementary school in Bluffton. I would like to see what are enrollment projections? What size school are we going to build for that? And of course, if we're building adding elementary capacity, what's our down the road for middle school, high school capacity? And then I know a little diversified architectures here. They came to the School Improvement Council meeting at Hilton Head, and I asked this question already. What is the capacity we're building Hilton Head Island High School for? And what I'm not sure maybe Robert knows is they're sort of planning for what we have right now. Hilton has been fairly flat. I mean, it's been really flat in the mid thirteen hundreds. So I that's what I'm guessing is the plan to build it to, but really our capacity targets are eighty five percent because of school choice. So I just want to make sure that when we're planning that we're planning to hit an eighty five percent capacity and not to start off at a hundred percent because I think school choice is an issue for south of the broad, and I think it's going to become a bigger issue. Could Mr. Shohan speak a little bit more about this Technology Warehouse and Imaging Center?
Yes.
Can we give it a better name?
Currently, technology utilizes about four thousand square feet in this building. But unfortunately, that's divvied up between seven different spaces. And only two of those spaces allow pallet palletized access, so a pallet jack to get to it. This adds, this makes the storage very disjointed and does not allow for any ease of workflow. It also adds to manpower exponentially, usually two to three times for every process because you get the pallet off the truck, you have to break it down, you move it in the room, so you're you're doing a lot of moving around. We would really like to have one space where we can maintain all of that new equipment coming in. But the biggest part is after we finish our life cycle, so our student devices last four years. Most of our technology equipment switches, they last five years, but when that stuff comes out, we have to bring it back, we have to organize it, we have to palletize it, and then we have to get it to recycler to come pick it up. So I'm I'm sure some of our other, our board members has been around for a while in the summertime. They walk in this building and there's pallets lined up and down both of these halls, which is not a good thing for the fire marshal or anything with safety in this building. So that would really help us relieve a lot of stress on our staff. It would also give us an imaging center. Most of these big projects we come in will have different contractors coming in to help us, but we'll spend a month working on this equipment before it ever gets out to the school because the biggest goal for technology is to not impair the educational process. So everything we do, we come in after four o'clock and we work to the middle of the night to get it done. So when the kids come back the next day, there is no disruption at all for them. The another big thing is, unfortunately, we live in the South. Almost all of our deliveries come in the afternoons, and it rains most afternoons here in the South. So we're not only fighting very expensive equipment, but the possibilities of it getting wet and damaged while we try to unload it and bring it into this building.
Can I ask a follow up? It's funny because you're I like staring at this column here. So which that that does sound important, and I was trying to understand what you meant by imaging center. So that makes sense that. So a couple of follow ups. One, that wouldn't necessarily house like our our knock and all that kind of stuff. That's elsewhere.
Absolutely not.
Okay. And then number two is, should we have everything in one location? In the event of a hurricane or in the event of something else going on, should we not have? I don't know how other districts do it. It seems weird to have all of our technology in one spot.
Most districts do utilize a central warehousing location. And for us with our staffing, having another building, you know, if we had two warehouses, you're also talking about having a staff member pretty much stay at it because when we get these deliveries, they tell us, you know, they'll be there between eight and five. So you you might have a person sitting around that office all day. So that's another reason why we want to limit it to one space. And also think of it, we don't have, we may have a lot of equipment in there, but it's usually not in there for a long time. We try to turn and burn as much as possible, get it in, configure it, and then to the schools and make it useful for our staff.
Fair to say then this is more of a processing center rather than a storage center?
It could be called that. Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Campbell and then Mr. Dallas.
As far as technology, we've been talking about this for years. And that Sharon said that hallway has been stacked with stuff. You know, and even you go inside the building, the office, stuff are stacked around. So I don't see any reason why anyone should turn about this warehouse. So I don't see any reason why anyone's turned about this warehouse. We needed it, we needed it ten years ago. Um, as far as. The new gym for uh, River View. I've had some people call me about it, years, and the reason why. It because of when they play basketball or volleyball, they have to go to some other school. They have even, have even went to uh, the Bridges to play. And they don't have a gym to play. So I will support this. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Dallas.
Uh, yes, um, I would, I would like to just come out and say that um. With transparency, I participated on the uh, initial version of the clock committee. And kudos to uh, Superintendent Rodriguez and Dr. Berg and others. Who affected a very smooth transition between during that whole time. The clock committee was a strategically advanced decision. Because what it did, it addressed it, it addressed two reasons that the prior. Um, referendum failed. One, lack of trust in the school district. And how it was run, pure statement of fact, not hyperbole here. The second thing is, it, Dr. Rodriguez took the messaging into the community. And every time, everywhere I went, it seemed like they were saying he's coming or he's been here. So I, I think that that sort of how it was handled the first time is very important, is going to be an advantage for us. The second, the second thing is. I think the uh, the buildings and what have you, there were people that uh, areas that felt like commitments had not been made. But I think that was due to financial sound fiscal decision-making. Uh, I see now we're willing to spend or recommend a hundred and forty-one million dollars on Hilton Head, which is a forty-year-old school. Uh, and it, this, you know, it's growing. This area is growing, it has been flat. But you look at the composition of where the population is coming from, it's absolutely going to grow. Uh, the other thing is on terms of the maintenance issues, the reality and the transparent truth is. That is a recurring theme in too many locations in the district. And I would suggest that we give the superintendent and his staff. A time to come up and take a real rigorous look at the, how that works. What are the, how is the communication of a need uh, executed? Uh, and then once it's executed, does it go into the technology system? So we're not in basically tying up another human being when we could redirect their efforts to some higher value. With single point of entry, multiple points of access, and then check and and really track. The closeout of issues. Because if the closeout of issues is very minimal, means things happen, but they get closed down. Then that goes away. And the reason that's so important is that. The maintenance is not a bond issue per se. But if it's not addressed, it will become a political issue at the time of voting. And so it's very much in our best interest to rigorously and deeply drill into that and get an answer. So we can take that out as part of the communication effort as well. But I am totally in support of what has been recommended so far. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, comments. Um. River View Charter School uh, is a K through eight school. And all our K through eight schools have a gymnasium, so this, this is an equity issue. Secondly, uh, they believe that they need an additional four classrooms. And uh, I don't see that listed on here, but uh, that's part of their requirement. And lastly, one of our biggest, I won't call it failures, but I, I would call it an oversight. Last time when we went through this process is we did not have good costing data for technology. And the construction, we've got to do a better job. And that's a hard, that's hard business because you're dealing with technology that changes all the time. But we need to have, uh, when I look at all our addendums that we had to do for contracts, many of them had to do with uh, technology. So we need to get a little better handle on where we're going on, especially the new construction uh, and the technology piece. Mr. Smith, you had another follow-up?
Um, als- also in, in terms of the. Technology warehouse and imaging center. Chat no problem with the name of it at all, um, but also in, in, in congruent with that, the career and technology expansion. Um, a couple, uh, probably about it, about two years now. Uh, some of, some of me, some of my colleagues have been saying that we would like a technology center. Be somewhere in between the middle, between the north and the south. I think that. Why not get more bang for our buck? And what better place not to, what better place to have a actual technology? Center or technologies hub that could house these different. These, these different things uh, and and in terms, in terms of the warehouse and in terms of these different careers. Uh, at, at one location, you're getting more bang for your buck versus building two different separate. Hubs, now you're putting it in one big building. And I, and and also, I believe that at some point in time, you also have someplace off campus. If something does happen to your main, your main brain of your building, that you also have a backup brain somewhere else. So in, in terms, in terms of all of that, I think that this is that, that with, with this being on the referendum. Now is the time to start that conversation because I think that now, if we don't do it now, then when? I mean, we're trying to stay ahead of the, uh, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve. And if we do it after this right here, we're, we're, we're going to be behind the eight ball. And we'll say that we want better, we want to bring better job opportunities to our kids. And right now, security. And technology is leading the way, so why if we don't do it now, then when? I think now we should start that conversation upon. Ha- upon having that building in, in between north and south for the broad. And also we could house both of the, both of these things at one, one, one fiscal place. I'm not sure how my colleagues feel about that, but. And I think that that, that is, that is something that is definitely needed. So uh, yeah, I just wanted to bring, bring that uh, bring that out. And I know we talked about it a little bit at the uh, techno- technology um. Committee meeting, so I just wanted to uh, bring that up. And and I just to touch back, you know, uh, just about, about the gym, the gym situation. I ain't knocking that they don't need it. But I'm just saying that to my colleagues in all fairness. I just don't want us to forget and I want us to remember that when we treat certain communities certain ways, that people. Have a better taste in their mouth for things and and make us cognizant of how we approach things moving forward. Because like I said, when I bought this up, even a month, even a couple of months ago, when I, when we were talking about the, the interest. And I'm, I'm more dressed up in the room than the interest of St. Helena Elementary School. It costs too much. Or Buford County School District never ever put the existing building. At, at St. Helena Elementary School, that was the original building from the old St. Helena High School. So we've never built up that gym. We've done some modifications and we've done some things, but we have inherited that. So the same energy we put towards other communities, let's be fair across the board. And then I just want to say that, that's why I saw, yes, from, for, for me as the representative from that area. Yes, I am kind of, I am on the chakra net because I know what I was told and I was fond upon and looking at like. Why would you want to put up a, uh, why would you want to put up, put up, put up a gymnasium? And I, and I just felt that we're, once again, we're, the same question could be asked here. And the same energy that was, that was, that was transferred there could be transferred here. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate all the comments from my colleagues. Um, I was looking at. We're saying that we have this bond referendum, which has been beautifully laid out. And it does list Ladies Island Middle School, and I know that's part of the new school. But I hope operations uh, are taken into consideration. That when you do not complete your punch list that already exists. It's hard for me to stand in front of my constituents and say, please vote for this bond referendum. When we have a, a, a well-run early college and I think they're supposed to be working on it. Um, well, the water has been dropping in that brand new theater. Uh, when you walk into the building where people can see water coming down from the roof. That should not happen. That's a punch list of things that we need to do for River View. I have no problems with the gym, but I just want for clarity. The understanding is that that was an elementary school. It was not a K through eight. It was an elementary school when they built it. And that's why they did not have a gym. It's not equity uh, or not thinking that they should have had it. It just wasn't in existent at that time. It was not the school that it is today. Um, but that parking lot, it was built when Lems was built. And I do understand that it's pavement, but I know there's equipment that will chop it up. Where you can put the correct lighting fixtures that you need. That is not. An excuse, uh, Mr. Outing, not to have your punch list completed. While we're asking to go before the public to vote for a four hundred and nineteen, a million dollar. Referendum. My constituents want to know what you're doing, what has been done because they can see it. Uh, I appreciate what Mr. Dallas said about the listing, computerizing it. But we need to be able to tell our, our, uh, people when they ask us, we need to tell the truth. You know, hey. That parking lot to be finished June twenty-first. With lights. You know, the, the roof has been completed and I know Mr. Campbell takes on that all the time at Well Branch. Uh, college. Principals shouldn't be telling me that there is a list of things. But what's more important, I have community people who are telling me they're not going to send their kids to Lems. Because of the conditions of that school. That's a true fact. And we need to understand, we need every vote. And we need to comply with what we're supposed to do. How hard is it to fix the roof? Don't we have something called eight percent money? There's money out there, so don't put it to me that, oh, well, that wasn't in the referendum. That's just standing on operating procedures to take care of your home. And I want to see these things done and, and as was stated at an earlier board meeting. Don't tell me. I want to see it. And when I go back to the schools, I want to see that we are making. That earnest effort that we tell our people that we're going to do. Don't ask me for more money if you have not completed that punch list. Thank you.
Don't see any further hands if you have anything else. All right.
Actually, excuse me, also, just also, uh, Matt, there was another school too, in terms of that smell over at um. Broad River. Have we, uh, Broad River had been, had been being backed up? Oh, okay, because I just, I think someone told me just the other day that they were, that they were, I'm going to double check just about, I believe someone told me just the other day. That they were at Broad River and that it had a, it had a, and then that was my initial, initial reaction was no. That was, that was fixed probably about a year, about a year now. They were like, hmm, you might want to check that out. So I just want to bring it up. But being that now, now is the time to bring out all these things that could possibly be out there, all this, uh, yeah.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is a donation from Vox Marshler Burgland, P A. To purchase the printing and binding of one thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year agendas. For each student at Red Cedar Elementary valued at five thousand dollars. Do we have a? Motion to approve this donation?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the donation of five thousand dollars from, is it Vaux or Vox?
Vox.
Vox Marshler Burgland, P A, to purchase the printing and binding of one thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year agendas for each student at Red Cedar Elementary School.
And I will second that with a thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussion?
I would like to thank um, Fox Marshler and Burgland, P A, for the donation. I know the students at Red Cedar greatly appreciate your support.
I'll now have a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. New Board Docs Platform Community Training. Can't wait.
Who's still on Carlton? And, no, you're fine.
Yes, I'm here.
Carlton and Ms. Hay, um. You wait one second, I'm going to send everyone emails to log into um, community.
Okay.
Unity. They're all individual, but I'm sending them now. Okay, everyone should have gotten um, an email to set up their new um, login to community. Uh, before you do that, though, I'll play this video um. That shows you a little bit about what it is about and how to log in and how to get to meetings. If it plays. There we go. Should be the first one.
Hello. Accordingly, for example, a meeting with the word. Council in its title, you can filter by community by diligent. Hello and welcome to Community by Diligent. As a council or board member, you want a reliable way to prepare for upcoming meetings. Take part in live meetings and access your meeting minutes after the meeting has taken place. With community, you will have access to upcoming meeting agendas as soon as they're made available. You can then annotate the agenda or print it out in preparation for your meeting. Let's take a look at how to sign in and navigate the community site as a member. To have access to member-only or executive content on a meeting agenda, you must sign into your organization's community site. To sign in for the first time, your administrator will set up an account for you and provide you with the username as well as a link to set up your password. Click on the link, enter your email address and then select send instructions. Check your inbox for instructions on how to reset your password. Select the reset your password button. This will launch a page allowing you to select your password. And confirm it. And confirm it. Now you can sign into your community site by entering your username and chosen password. If you need to reset your password, you can select forgot your password from the sign in page. Enter your email address and select send instructions. Signing in successfully will land you on the community site homepage. On the left-hand side, there is a main navigation menu. Select this menu icon to open and close the menu. At the top, there are some options available to you for support. A help option where you can access our help guide, send us feedback, or contact our support team. The edit profile section allows you to update your profile details or sign out. For example, if you'd like to update your password, select the edit your profile option. And from here, select the password field. Verify your current password. Then pick a new password. Note the password guidelines provided to you. Once you've chosen a new password, make sure you select the save button. You can adjust any other profile details such as your username or email address. Let us now head back to your homepage to take a look at your meetings list. Your homepage will display the upcoming meetings tab in the meetings area by default. To view your recently or past held meetings, select the previous tab. Your most recently held meetings will appear at the top. To help you find a meeting faster, you can use the filter option. You can filter by entering a keyword which will search meeting titles and match them accordingly. For example, a meeting with the word council in its title, you can filter by date range. For example, to view meetings from the past month only. Finally, you can filter by meeting type.
I'm having Molly pause it for a second to let you know. This is just to give you an overview of what's, what it looks like, what's going on. This is not for you to sit here and try to follow her step by step. This is just so that you can, this is to introduce you to what community looks like, what it's going to be about. And then we will come back and do one-on-one. So trying to sit there and try to follow the steps of going on with her, that we don't want you to have to do that and to get yourself frustrated. This is just to introduce you to see what, what community looks like, what it's going to be about and what's changing in board docs. Yeah.
I don't, I can't log into the legacy version, right?
Yes, because we, yeah, because we have not gotten rid of that. We, we have not, we have not gone into community yet. We, we have not transferred everything over and stuff. So you should be able to just go back into board docs.
How to access, navigate and view meetings in your community sites. Be sure to also check out our other video tutorials to learn more about how to use community.
Kind of gradually putting stuff in there, but we would say probably by June. Yeah, for the gym, because as, as we have started, we have started trying to transfer some stuff over and they've transferred a lot of things over, but until we get you all formally trained and comfortable in using it, um, we're not there yet.
When a meeting agenda is published in community, you will be notified by email and can log into your site to view, annotate and print it out in preparation for your upcoming meeting. Let's take a look at this process in your community site. When you're viewing an agenda, you'll be able to adjust your viewing options from the left-hand side. You can use the pan tool to move around the agenda or the cursor to select text. You can zoom in and out on the agenda to achieve the text size that is comfortable for you. If your agenda is long, use the thumbnails view to navigate to the page you need. When looking at your agenda, member only attachments will be indicated with a padlock icon. This is a member only attachment within a public section. Items in this section are visible by the public. However, the attachment remains private. You can view briefing notes that may have been added to sections and items when the agenda was prepared. These will appear in a box with a padlock icon and are only visible to you and other members of this meeting. As you view your agenda items, you can make your own annotations to note down thoughts and comments in preparation for the meeting. Keep in mind that all annotations you make are private so that only you can see them. As you add annotations, your additions will get automatically saved as comments. And your annotations are automatically synced so that you can pick up where you left off when logging in from your mobile phone, tablet or your PC. The annotation tools are found at the right-hand side of the top menu on your screen. There are three main annotation tools available, freehand tools, text tools and the comment tool. Let's take a closer look at each tool. The freehand tool lets you scribble on the agenda page to bring attention to important areas. Select the pen icon and start drawing. The text tools allow you to highlight or underline selected text on the agenda. Such as specific item details. The comment tool can be used to bring attention to a specific area in your agenda as well. Adding it will add a comment in the notes section on the left. All the annotations you made are logged in the notes view on the navigation pane. You can easily make changes to any selected annotation. Add or edit existing comments. resize it by clicking on the selection box. Move the annotation to a different area in the agenda. Or delete it. Once you're done annotating, you may want to download or print your document out. When you print out the agenda, you can select the specific pages you want to print and select whether or not you'd like your annotations to be included. Remember, if you need any help completing a task, use the help option on the top right corner of the site. You can view the community help guide, reach out to us for questions or send us feedback. Be sure to also check out our other video tutorials to learn more about how to use community.
So that is what's to come. Um, a question was about can we use executive session? That is for you all to determine if, if how we, how we handle executive session documents. So that's, that's your discretion to tell us what to do with that. But yes, there is a feature where you will be able to do that.
Has everyone gotten the email? Okay, has everyone? Has everyone logged into community? Right now you're seeing mine, um, as publishers. We have access to all this other stuff. You guys won't see, I believe you guys just have current meetings and maybe past meetings on yours. Everything is pretty much self-explanatory, very easy. This one's supposed to be more easy to use than board docs. So I can give you some examples, uh, you guys won't see all of this. Just see the agenda and maybe view the agenda.
Yeah, she sent you an email with your.
And if you're having trouble, I'll come by and make sure that everyone's in.
I got the, I'm sorry.
You didn't get the email?
This is Mercado, I got the email. I tried to sign in, but, um, I couldn't get in. But that's probably more me because everyone knows I'm a techno fob.
I'll, I'll send it again. Sure if you got the right one or not. Um, it should just be a button to reset your password.
I think the email comes from Euphrody County School District.
I reset my password. That's what.
And I try, I reset mine as well.
Let me click on one.
Let me preview this as a member, how you guys would see it. Let's stop sharing real quick. Her password said it's been updated. Um, yes.
You know, you said when you sent in the email.
I didn't send it. It was diligent. I just clicked a button and then send it to them. So it should come from diligent.
Comes from diligent and not you.
Send it to my district, private. Holly?
Yes.
Privacy, that's fine.
It's not in your district email?
Send to my private.
Oh. Email shouldn't be in here. What's wrong?
You just said the magic word. Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Move and, move and second and it's gone.